Monday, June 1. PM, roll call.
Dr. Green. Chief.
President.
Blackwell.
Present.
Peters. Collins.
Present. For the record, Councilman Dr. Green and Councilman Peters both announced they would not be here today. But it's amazing. Flight and leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So who?
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Chief. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name, ayes have it. Public comment, is there anybody in the public that wishes to say anything that's not on the agenda this evening?
Sir, is there a chance you might be able to bring us up to date on the uh bike paths going from First Street to Fifth Street with the San Francisco time?
Yeah, I'll refer that to Greg right there.
Yep, um, so we've got, we're on the DOT wedding schedule for uh early October.
We're in completion of the spring. Thank you, Mayor.
Number five, we have a guest speaker, Shelley Engelbreit from Scott County Library.
That would be Sorection.
Okay.
That would be Crystal Schaper. Um, I'm president of Scott County Library Board, thank you. Um, every year the board tries to go out to all the councils and let you know what's going on. It's like, I thought you were raising your hand, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, uh, and hopefully, um, your council does understand, uh, especially when you come to planning of your budget, uh, that you see that big number that goes to the library that that is not your funds, that is funds that's coming in from taxpayers, from your Eldridge community. Uh, there is a library law in the state of Iowa that says every community member does have to have some type of library services, i.e. where we have Scott County Library System. I handed out a form here, uh, basically of what our Scott County Library has provided to you, not only the Eldridge branch, but this being headquarters. I think the big thing, if you look at year-to-date, and if you look at what, um, your citizens, uh, have saved by buying materials and or checking them out, you've saved over a million dollars. Uh, those citizens have paid, saved over a million dollars been checking out those library materials in the last year. Uh, our website, if you've ever checked it out, I have not checked it out, excuse me, I encourage you to do so. You not only can check out books, you can check out DVDs, um, uh, magazines, newspapers, periodicals, things like that, that would save you a lot of money. Um, we also are involved in a consortium, which is numerous libraries around, uh, Scott and Rock Island County, where somebody does want a book, we have those different libraries that we can, um, grab those books from, so you have access to that. Basically, you can't, the word can't get it from here is not an option because we will find that book for you and that you will be able to use it. Um, you have a lot of summer reading programs, and again, with headquarters being right here in your city, you you have the most opportunity for that bang for the buck for those summer reading programs. Uh, Bookmobile is going to the various elementaries within the North Scott community. They're going to Walcott, um, Bluegrass and Buffalo as well. I always say, isn't it great to, for a kindergartner to get on on a Bookmobile and check out a book? How cool is that? That how how much they would like to do that? Um, and and again, we we kept going during COVID. Um, our, uh, online usage was was has had increased. The levels are coming back, that we are now, um, at the same levels, if not more than before COVID started. So that's a good positive as well, people, people are using that library. Um, I always like to bring up the the joke, um, in a meeting that we had in City Walkout one time, where a gentleman said that libraries were becoming extinct, the Kindles were gonna take them over, well, it's not true. I mean, you can rent those books to read on your Kindle from the Scott County Library rather than having to buy them, and it's for free. Um, that being said, again, the numerous things that your library provides to citizens of Eldridge is right here. Um, we thank the North Scott Press for putting, um, the information about the library in there so that we can inform our citizens. Um, and that's really all I have, and then I also want to, if I could for a moment, talk about the renewal of our lease, uh, for a branch that we have here in the city. If anybody has any questions.
So, of all the Scott County branches, throughout the whole correlation, is the Eldridge branch still the main, the main?
Yes.
Value regarding checkout of books and materials?
Yes, and that's what, and that's what it was, you know, fifteen years ago, when they decided to have the headquarters here, and when, you know, Slidels was purchased. It it wasn't just the city of Eldridge that put money into that branch and or headquarters. You know, it was supervisors, and it was the various branch locations that put that in that to make that headquarters. It just so happens that, you know, the city of Eldridge is getting the bang for their buck, a, having headquarters here, and then having, you know, that within the city limits.
Right, so we still withdraw the greatest?
Correct.
Regarding checkout?
Correct.
And then is is second, is second still the Bookmobile, or no? Regarding materials checkout?
No, actually, um, the Bookmobile would probably be in, I think, third or fourth position.
No?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of a tie between Durant and Walcott. Yeah, Walcott just did, um, a half million dollar renovation project for a library, um, a couple of years ago, and that has increased a lot of of people coming in there.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, and thank you for bringing up the Bookmobile. Um, I've been on the board since two thousand nine, and when I became came on the board, we never had a, um, a savings account, so to speak, earmarked for the Bookmobile. We have now put money away, and we will have to replace that Bookmobile in two years. Uh, the goal there is not to go ask for other, more taxes, that will be grant funded. We have an incredible staff that knows how to write. They're crazy grant writers, we get a lot of grants in. We have not raised our budget in five years, except unfortunately, and probably like with what you guys do, um, insurance and benefit, uh, insurance and salaries.
Sure. Okay, so as we move forward then, regarding the Bookmobile, signs, angle, plan, right, sustainability, fiscal sustainability?
Knock on wood, we can get two more, two more, everything, but we can get two more years out of it.
With that, before, okay, because I was the the book, the current Bookmobile, I was on the foundation board, we'll operate funds to purchase.
Right, right, and we had, and we had this much money in our account, and we hope, we would have, not a lot, but we'll have like probably thirty, thirty-five thousand saved for that. And but and when you write grants, if anybody's ever written grants here, when you write a grant and they ask you, how much money do you have? You're gonna get hopefully a lot better grants, putting money into it than if you don't have anything in there.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I got a question. On this one million twenty-six thousand three ninety-six, how did you come up with that?
Basically, it's the amount of people that have checked out stuff within that library branch, um, within the Eldridge Library Branch, and that's either books, that's periodicals, that would be DVDs. So like they're checking out, for instance, a DVD, what is the cost of that DVD? They're not paying anything for that DVD.
Okay.
And that's how we're calculating that.
But you say Eldridge residents.
Correct. And what?
So that's what the residents of Eldridge?
Mm-hmm.
They're saving, or is that from Scott County?
That's that branch.
Also?
That's that.
That branch.
It's that branch.
So Long Grove and Downey Hill and stuff?
It's the Eldridge branch.
That's not, that that is included in that?
No, it's not Eldridge, Long Grove, it's the Eldridge branch. There's no branch in Long Grove, there's no branch in Downey.
Well, I understand that. What I'm saying is Long Grove and Downey, they pay so much a year, just like we do, we pay the most.
You have the most residents per capita, that's why.
Correct. So you're saying that Eldridge residents save that much money, that's not the rest of them?
That's, that is what my, uh, our director gave us, and that is the residents from the, from, um, the branch, yes, that is true. No, it's not North Scott, sir, it's the residents of Eldridge.
We?
Yes, you are, why are you not, why are you thinking that I'm lying to you, or giving you misinformation?
Well.
Where did you get all your facts from, sir?
I've got a lot of facts, because I'm, I'm really thinking about, uh, when this contact group renewed, to say, uh-uh.
Put your police station there, that we've already wanna do?
Yes.
And I don't know why you would say that.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you why. Because when the renew comes up in twenty-five, you've had that building for twenty-five years. You have paid the city of Eldridge four hundred dollars a month.
Mm-hmm. That was a long-term contract.
That covers, that covers the insurance on the building, that's it. So, we're not getting anything from that building, and I know how much we paid for that building.
No, sir, you did not pay for that building, the rest of the building.
The city?
No, the city did not do it all.
Sorry, the city.
Supervisors did it as well. The supervisors.
I'm not gonna argue with you.
But you are though.
Well, that's because you're arguing with me. Um, I don't believe this number, because I don't think there's that many people in Eldridge that belong to the, belong to the library.
There's a lot to be seen, you haven't been in the library and used it?
I'm in.
I don't know that number, sir.
Well, then I would like to have that number. Okay. If you would please give me that number, I will be, I'd love to hear. Because I don't think there's that many people that use the library from Eldridge. You get them from Long Grove, you get them from Downey, I'm not, I'm not disputing that. But we are paying the most every year, our, our bill goes up, and your bill never changes, hasn't changed in twenty-three years.
That's because it was a, um, contract, excuse me, lease with by the city of Eldridge. You can renegotiate.
And I understand.
You can renegotiate that contract with the library and, um, do it at that time.
Well.
Bruce.
Yeah.
We have coming up, plan to have a different meeting for this.
Sure.
So if you don't mind.
No, that's fine.
We'll do that on a different meeting.
That's fine, I don't have a problem.
Can I, can I say something? To go out into publicly be negative about the library?
I'm not being negative.
Excuse me, I did not mention your name, but to go out and be public, publicly negative about the library is just not acceptable, especially if you've not stepped foot in that library and not used it. This was an agreement way back when that was established, not only by the city of Eldridge, but by the Board of Supervisors and everybody else that was involved in purchase that building to get it going. We are coming up on a new contract. We would appreciate, and Ken Beck even said it, and I think that was in your minutes from the Board of Supervisors, for an extension of a fifteen-year lease. But to go out and say something that we're gonna create and move something else without even negotiating a lease is just, in my opinion, bad politics.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is Blackwell?
I agree. Everybody has their own views, I don't think I have all the same views with my experience on on the foundation board. But I do, we need to look at every option, then let's put it into place and and look at the overall budget. Yes, we do need the police station, City Hall, obviously, we've been in this space. We had a referendum before, which failed, not the concept, but the way it was funded. People looked at it differently, and that's, that's okay. So, so we still have to keep that in mind, but we know the importance of the library and the materials, especially now when there's some legislations trying to pass to take books out of kids' hands, instead of putting them in. That's what the library does, that's what the Bookmobile does, brings books to the children, to give them an opportunity to increase their education. And if I, if if I understand correctly here, so, and, uh, and maybe, and maybe Patricia, you know, has more, has more insight, you know, she can come and speak as well, but the, the amount that you have listed is, would be fairly accurate, because they, because they base it off the actual address of that community.
Correct.
So even though we, even though we do serve people from Downey, from Parkview, and Long Grove, there is a vague track goes into the boundaries of Eldridge, is that correct?
Correct.
So, so, so those dollars, people would be fairly, fairly accurate?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thanks. Just for clarification.
Just for the record, too, Kathy Zimmerman, that just got a big promotion with library, and she was amazing at Grand Haven. Did just an amazing job for the seniors.
Well, and again, you know, everybody thinks, oh, it's just a library, why do you have to pay somebody's salary that? You know, our, our director has, um, uh, you know, a BA, a BA in Libraries, Science and Masters, I believe. Um, like I said, the amount of grant money that they've written, it's, it's over thirty thousand dollars a year that we're not coming back. Yes, you do pay a chunk of money, but you're also growing. I mean, I mean, um, the million-dollar house is up here, but that's not to do with what goes into the library, that it's based on the per capita, everybody's amount as they're growing is going up. I mean, we own the building in Walcott, we don't have to pay rent there, which has been a great savings. You know, we have to pay rent in Bluegrass, um, and Princeton, you know, and Durant, we don't pay rent there, but they do pay into us, and Durant is in Cedars and Muskegon County, and they choose to come to us. So again, I mean, Mr. Mayor, assuming this will come up, do you know when? I mean, we're early to talk about this, but do you know when this will come up?
No, as you know, there've been other issues with the city, there've been the news, so we're getting through those, and we're close to having all those done, and then this will be coming around.
Okay, I look for positive, uh, working on this. Um, I will not tolerate, I, I, I've been within politics for twelve years at Walcott, I will not tolerate going out and campaigning over something without one hundred percent correct information. I cannot handle throwing information out there that is not correct.
I believe in having correct information as well.
So again, I appreciate you, and appreciate talking to you guys, and Nave, is it Navina's, I didn't hear it. And Jeff, if you guys find that you have other questions, will you email Tricia or myself, Jody, and let us know, and then we can get those questions answered and get them back to you?
Absolutely.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Good. Without any further information.
Thanks, again.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Not that anymore.
Well, it's very, it's very.
Consideration to approve the, uh, minutes from the city council meeting from June fifth.
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Collins, approve the minutes from June fifth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name, ayes have it. Bill's payable. Unbilled payable, and it's going over those, I noticed there was two bills, two bills radiator for unit eighteen, and I looked into it, and it was, it was double billed, so there's a correction on the bill total. So the total bills payable was presented at one seventy-four, three twelve seventy. It actually is one seventy-four, one fifty-seven seventy with that correction. The bills radiator. Anybody else have any other questions?
Mayor, what page did they have?
On, Mr. Boyd? Well, it's not number, but on the, on the first page there, go down to their alphabetical order, so you'll see right under Jeff Ashcraft, Bills Radiator Automotive Service, Unit Eighteen, AC Condenser for one fifty-five.
Under what the, what, what business?
Bills Radiator Service.
Bills Radiator, okay. Actually, I think, does bill, does bill twice a year?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chief, do you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Any questions?
Mr. Blackwell?
I have a couple. One of them is for Twin State Engineering Chemical. It's the price, this is a five hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-three cents. Just wanna see if this was a typo or not, it says weak, W-E-E-K killer, and submersible pump. So that's supposed to be lead killer? If not, what is weak killer? It looks good, please don't kill it. Ready, ready to.
What's the vendor on that one?
The vendor is Twin State Engineering and Chemical. Weak killer is submersible pump, five twelve sixty-three.
It's from the last. Meaning, it's a five.
Okay.
I would have just been in time.
That's a five dollar thing. Then with Tyson Sawai Company, sprayer analogy, seventy-two ninety-nine, so what was that, what was that for, was that for, was that for chemical treatment of bitches, that sprayer for seventy-two dollars?
That would have been a must.
Correct.
Aren't enough, we had.
We made, it's just a, just a line, we, you you know, considered for spraying or watering the fire.
Okay, so with the one.
But it's an extension one, because we gotta tie one that has to, to reach our pot.
So we're gonna say, okay, box, right, right, so it's just, okay, so that's about the prices.
Yes, it's a little bit one of that, right? Now it's like, yeah, it's just sort of, okay.
That's, that's the two I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
That means, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the corrective bills payable.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion by Collins, second by Chief, to approve the corrective bills payable, the new total of one seventy-four, one fifty-seven seventy. All those in favor say aye.
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 Name, ayes have it. A motion to approve the liquor license renewal for the community center, while I'm looking at these, I notice there was a name that came up on the one, and that's been checked into, and it has been removed, but I believe the copy you guys all had, it printed a previous equation for some reason, but that is no longer in the system. I correct you?
Mm-hmm.
We have that correction, I'll be looking for a motion then, Mayor.
Yes, looking for a motion to approve through the community center.
Okay, I'll make a motion for approval of the license for the community center.
I'm second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Chief, to approve the Elder Community Center liquor license. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name, ayes have it. Sixty, consideration to approve a five-day liquor license for the city of Eldridge for the summer festival, for the effective dates of July seventh through the twelfth. Promotion to approve the five-day liquor license.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for a second?
Second.
Motion by Collins, second by Blackwell, approve the five-day liquor license for the city Eldridge Summer Festival. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name, ayes have it. I'm going over some things from the different changes and positions for the city. There's been a few meeting dates, the minutes were costed, were never approved. I'll read the dates out loud. Meeting from October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, February eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three, April first of two thousand twenty-three, April eighth of two thousand twenty-three, April thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three, May ninth of two thousand twenty-three, May twelfth of two thousand twenty-three, May seventeenth of two thousand twenty-three, May twenty-third, and May thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. It's a consideration to approve the minutes from those meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve those units.
Second.
Motion by Chief, second by Blackwell, to approve the multiple city council meetings, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Names, ayes have it. Consideration on the second reading of this two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen, rezoning parcels nine three two seven zero three zero zero six and nine three two seven zero one zero zero three from S.A. Suburban Ag to District to I two General Industrial. Jeff, can I call on you for that?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, we haven't received any other comments. Uh, I did meet with Councilman Dr. Green, uh, to address some of his concerns about permitted uses in those districts. Uh, we did, uh, make a few changes, um, that were gonna recommend to the planning, so we convinced them. Um, and once it goes through them, I'll have something back in front of you, so I take that, that about themselves, right?
Nobody from the public's called in?
I'm making a motion that, uh, we approve the second reading for ordinance twenty twenty-three thirteen.
Second, Paul.
Motion by Chief, second by Collins, to approve the second reading ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen under rezoning of a parcel from S.A. Suburban Agricultural to I two Industrial, roll call.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Seventy, consideration to approve the street closure for the Elder North Scott Chamber Conference on September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, for their Oktoberfest, and then December first, two thousand twenty-three, for their hometown holiday. Joe, did they check with you, make sure there's no conflict on the street holdings?
Nobody's talked to you about it yet, but since we've done it in years past, I don't see any issues with it.
Okay. And to approve the street closure, the holidays for the Chamber?
So when, you mentioned years past, there's, there's been no, there's been a discussion, just maybe took a week or like a month before, or is everything pretty, just pretty much standard?
It's pretty much standard.
What you expect?
We, we've never had any issues with it, it's always randomly pretty low for us and stuff, so.
I haven't any issues with it, right, right, Chief, so I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Collins, to approve the street closure for the Elder North Scott Chamber Conference. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Names, ayes have it. Last meeting, we talked about some, um, different, uh, equipment and software for, uh, to track, um, to help with payroll and all the different, different the shift differential and overtime, all that, and the police department, and to keep track of some other things, there's some issues that cities have with keeping that straight, I'll call in about it here on this year.
So I did talk to the representative with ADP, and I asked the questions that came up like in the last meeting. Um, one of those being whether or not we'll be able to track the clothing allowance for employees. There is a function in the software that would allow to track for that clothing allowance, but you would have to essentially enter it in as in units kind of like ours, so one unit would be twenty dollars, if they bought something for forty or fifty dollars, they'd have to put in several units of twenty dollars, it wouldn't be able to track the penny, so for that, we're probably gonna be better off just tracking that in our database, um, separately. Um, we did talk about the possibility of community punch-in and punch-out, and if there would be a cost difference. So, uh, it is possible to do that with this software, and there's not a considerable cost difference. However, um, going through our setup with our structure here in the different departments and the different shifts and different differentials and overtime, and, um, people coming in that are salaried, people coming in that work similar shifts, and then people coming in that are on call-outs and, um, coming into the city hall, or they're city shop first, and some that don't. Um, plus. Um, plus the possibility that there would be some sort of, um. Responsibility or liability for the city to provide technology to all of the employees that would be asked to punch in or punch out. Um, from. Uh, cellphone or a tablet or something if they weren't coming into city hall, going through all of those different options. Um, the the most practical and effective option for our organization would be the web-based timesheet, which would be what we're doing right now. Um, input inputting all of those different cost centers and everything and then being able to just fill those out essentially like a timesheet, but electronically tracking that and getting a supervisor. Approval and then importing all of that to our payroll system. And again, that's going to track and improve your time off, your vacation and all of those sorts of benefits. And allow you to co- um, choose those different costs, cost centers. So it's going to make the, um. Payroll side easier for the clerk's office from going through all those pages and trying to figure out, um. The handwriting and the different hours and putting all of those different things in. Um, so it will definitely be more efficient for us, but it did make more sense to go with the web-based option at this point. It is customizable by department. So if we got into it and then later on decided that we wanted to look at another option, we can still do that. And it wouldn't necessarily have to be across the board. So there's always that option, but the recommendation right now would just be to. Over that, um, initial web-based software to do that web-based timesheet.
That's the question. Six I also didn't have scheduled on there that we talked about.
It does have the scheduling capability, but that is not in this, um, package. We haven't. We haven't looked at that, um, part of the software yet, but it is something. Choose. And there's several departments that schedule and, um, have changes in schedules and have that challenge. So it is available through A D P O. So we would still be looking at the same cost that we discussed at the last meeting, um, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-five cents a month for seventy-nine employees. And that would include all of our part-time as well. And, um, they would just come in and fill out their timesheets either daily with their shift or the end of the week, whatever's making most sense for them right now.
So they can still manually put in their time every week. You're just using the web base to help you with human errors, figure out your paychecks.
Yeah. So and it's still going to have to go, it'll have to go for a supervisor approval. Once they fill in their timesheet and they hit that submit button, they can no longer edit. Um, it any changes or anything to the time she would have to be done by admin or supervisor. And it will go to that supervisor then for approval before it will be able to go and get imported into our, our payroll system by one of the clerks. So. It'll be very similar to what we're doing right now, which is is working as far as counting for time and everything and and department heads are checking those at the end of. Every week and signing off on those and then sending them over to our office for another check off before they go to payroll. Um, but essentially just putting into electronic to to help with that efficiency.
Mr. Blackwell.
All right. I don't have a question on me. You you discussed this last time, you know, regarding the system, the similarity to Crohn's. That will be used. It allows the employee to be, to be honest and uphold them regarding entering the time. Plus, there is a checks and balances, as Nevada said, supervisor looking at that. All already of the business side is A P, A P fiscal as well. I'm not for sure. There's a second checks and balances to Nevada to be put in place, either by the city clerk or somebody. For their priority, these two checks and balances on top of that, what the employee put in. So with that, the cost put into it is not much different than what we're doing now. We're going. Open, being honest with employees, trust them in doing the work. I would be a favor moving forward with this. So I think it saves us, saves us costs. We can better track that if we move forward. Be beneficial for for all of us.
I did want to just mention too that we, we talked about, um, with the punching in and out option. Uh, how much that it would be hard to be able to try to, uh, control our costs with overtime by just those few minutes at the beginning and end of a shift. Um, there are systems that have gone to a rounding, um, by fifteen minutes, but then they end up with, especially when you have, um. Collective bargaining unit employees, they end up having to go back and there's been lawsuits where they've had to recover those costs for the, the minutes that got rounded up. Where they were there. So it's a, it's a little bit more difficult to control those hourly costs with punching in and out too. So. We explored all of those options.
Mr. Collins, you have any questions?
No, not this time.
I think we should move forward with it myself.
Right. So do I hear a motion? To consider approval of the purchase and information of the A D T time and attendance software.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Sort of. Motion by Chief, second by Blackwell. Approve the A D P time attended software. All those in favor say aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Consideration to approve the city of Eldridge. Y and work partnership. Nevada, I'll call on you on this again.
Uh, this was another program that we talked about at the last meeting and there were a couple of questions that went out. So I checked with Scott County and the city of Baton Rouge. We both use this benefit for their employees, um, the Y at work program where the. City would contribute twenty dollars towards the membership for its, um, benefit eligible employees and then the Y would meet that with a ten dollar contribution. And any, uh, financial obligation for any membership over that by the family would be covered by, uh, the individual, the employee. So, um, we would be looking at if all thirty-five full-time employees participated, um, about seven hundred dollars a month. Or eight thousand four hundred a year for that additional benefit. But I did reach out to the other, uh, agencies using that currently to, to see what kind of policy they were using to make sure that they were paying for memberships. That were being used. And they both came back with a really similar policy that, um, if we were to move forward, I would suggest, uh, considering putting this policy in place as well. Um, they have a commitment from their employee to maintain eligibility for this benefit. They need to log twenty-four visits every three months. So every three months they go in and turn that into their employer, their supervisor to sign off and ensure that they can continue receiving that benefit. If they have a spouse or a partner that is on the insurance plan, um, and is also going to. To the Y and using that membership, those can count towards those twenty-four visits, but, um. Both agencies agree that they were not counting children that were, um, I believe it was ages fourteen and under because a lot of those are going to be. Your daycares or your dance classes and things like that. You're wanting to promote that, that exercise as, as this benefit that's offered. Um. Besides those eligibility requirements, they didn't really have anything else in place for a policy. It was just, uh, checking in every few months. To make sure that it was being used if they were going to continue contributing. And when we sent the interest out, we had about eleven or twelve employees that responded that they were interested in the benefit.
Is there anything you heard, Nevada, that's written in? If it's not being used and not being responding for visits, were they terminating at any points?
Yeah. So, um, we, we could write that policy for, to check in however often that we wanted to, but the policy that, um. We kind of borrowed from those other agencies is that every three months if they haven't logged that twenty-four visit requirement, then they would at that point. Who's that eligibility for that next quarter?
For the next quarter, right? So it didn't terminate completely. Would it be based on per quarter?
They check them quarterly. I, I didn't check to see if they were kind of letting people in and out of that, that benefit. Um, once they got cut off from eligibility, I don't know if they had a, a period of time, but I can certainly look into that.
Done or not. It's grace period per se, right? So. And also this cost too. Just looking at it, there's a factor into regarding both promotion. Strength, cardio, which helps that can assist and hope regarding. Replace injuries. As well, and 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 just the whole standpoint too. So if you look at that, replace injuries. The cost of that or any workers comp in, I think this would be worth the investment. To ensure that those employees who want to participate in it, they have an opportunity to avoid workplace injuries. And and remain fit.
We, we did talk to, um, our insurance agent about it when he was here on another topic to see if it, um, provided any cost benefit to us. For our other insurance for work comp and things like that, or lowered our, our rate or our risk at all. It didn't directly impact our rate, but, um, he had. He had that same response that you see that more in the, um. Deep line planes that you're in improper work comp and injuries and going to, um, sick to the doctor. So those types of things.
Anything of any questions from Nevada on the Y program? Do I hear a motion to consider approving the Eldridge. Work Y and work partnership?
So moved.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Collins, approve the city of Eldridge Y at work partnership. All those in favor say aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Most important thing on the event, let's see.
Good news, Greg. Good news, good news, buddy.
I think so, yeah. Um. With, uh, if, if things continue to go with plans, this is probably the, probably be the second or last time I talk to you about, about this project in a council meeting, uh. The last time would be final acceptance. Unfortunately, final acceptance is going to take a while because that means grass is growing and, uh, you're never going to get grass grow well in the summer and it certainly is. Quite recent weather isn't going well for us. So, so way back in the fall, but, um, if you haven't been by lately, they are. I'm going to say ninety-nine point nine percent done with the pavement and, and ninety-five percent done with everything else. Where they are at in terms of actual work yet to perform. Uh, there's an intake that they damaged and, and Brian worked doggedly to get them drawn up to it and they have. And so there's an intake of, in the first city shop, if you haven't seen it. Uh, um. I'm giving you credit. You did. Oh, so that, that's, that's a custom intake essentially. And so that, the, the lid of that is supposed to be here next week. And so that's why there's a little bit of a barricaded off piece of pavement. Um, there's no other street pavement left to install. There is a piece of sidewalk at second and the player that should be going down tomorrow, which is stopped beside his table. That will be the end of the concrete. And then they're down to roadside work, um, finishing their cleanup. Putting down topsoil and putting down grassy, which a- again, it'll be fall before we see any growth. Uh, and striping. Uh, obviously we've got turn lanes in all four directions and, and through lanes and centerline striping. We need that. Um, before we want to open this thing up fully, uh, to all lanes. And that's really the decision point we're at today. And, and I apologize if we didn't give you much advance notice because really it, it was three thirty today that we got. The, uh, S results on the smoothness. So if you recall, they, they. We've added collectively, uh, to this project, a smoothness requirement that the pavement rides. Very well, to be very smooth, more so than a typical D O T contract would require. Um, and that's intentional because we wanted to be smooth and it was done on West Sinclair Road and, and they, uh. Fortunately, I must go, I wrote didn't grind anything. Um, unfortunately here, there, there will be grinding. We talked about this, I think, at the last time we met. The tests that they had performed last fall for the pavement they placed last summer and fall, uh, failed and, and it'll be ground. Uh, they just had that test performed for all of the remaining pavement. So essentially East Claire and North First Street. They had that performed last Monday and we got results this afternoon and there will be grinding on portions of, of. Claire and North First Street. And so the grinding is not inherently problematic. I, I think I said this, it literally is, is happening on just about every single country. Concrete project around. It's hard to see on concrete, um, which is. Good. I mean, that's aesthetic thing. It's not a function thing. But if you look at, I mean, Veterans Memorial Parkway, uh, in Devonport, Forest Grove and Baton Rouge. Um, I said before on Iowa, Illinois and over the river, they all have some portions that got grabbed. And, uh, it's not as, as detrimental as maybe it once was thought to be or once was. It's certainly less detrimental. It's not detrimental on concrete. It's a little worse on asphalt. They end up. Respraying the asphalt to kind of seal it, but we don't have that, that function here. So long story short, there will be grinding on that pavement. Uh, it is scheduled for Monday and Tuesday of next week. And then the striping, because understandably, you don't want to strike the pavement and then immediately grind the paint off. Striping is scheduled to happen Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of next week. And so, uh, barring any changes or bad weather. By the end of next week, the entirety of that project. Is ready to open and complete. The signal is ready to go now. Uh, so that's kind of the decision point I'm, I'm offering to, to counsel for your opinion. Uh, we'll have a progress meeting with contractor again tomorrow. We've been doing them every other Tuesday or every Tuesdays. And we can, they're, they're awaiting our opinion as to what to do with the pavement in the meantime, because there are not a lot of my local people around this week. If you saw, there's not a lot of work for them to be doing. They're doing cleanup. They're going to do roadside work, um, after we talk about the change order. But there won't be a whole lot of, of, of people working and obviously most of the equipment is gone. We can leave it in that state, barricade it off, no traffic. And wait until it's completely done by the end of next week to open it up. Uh, the other option we've proposed and, and the contractors open to it is, is to open it up to some degree of traffic. Knowing that we're never going to fully shut it down again. But as that grinding occurs and then as that striping occurs, we'll, we'll have lane shifts where, you know, contractors working in Eastbound Leclerc. Everybody's getting pushed to the north side. Um, the, the plus and minus of that is obviously it's home to traffic. We don't have any detours anymore. Uh, the minus is it's not fully open, so. It's going to be a little confusing. We, I, I guess our recommend, recommendation would be don't open it up. Fully with the traffic signal, you know, having red, yellow, greens and left turn arrows and right turn, um, because there's no lane line. So it's going to be difficult to, to line yourself up. I, I just want to police that.
I fully agree. I think it's better to do it as is, just finish the project and.
Um, you're going to cause too much. For you guys, there is, uh. Why would you not hopefully open?
You're going to cause a whole lot of confusion. We're opening up more risk of accidents. And then when the construction guys are out there actually doing. Their painting and other stuff, more shipping traffic left and right, it, it just causes too much confusion. We open the risk of more injuries. Uh, possibly to construction workers or even our citizens. It's just. It's not going to shorten. Opening up the project, I think, uh, just for safety all the way around. I think it would just be far better just to finish the project and then open it.
You're looking at what? An additional three days, maybe?
I, I mean, the remainder of this week and all of that. In theory, you could go move barricades tomorrow. Um, and what we had talked about as an interim is to open it up to some level of traffic. And even that's difficult, right? As soon as we open it up and we take the detour routes down, um, it's, it's fair game. And there are semis that drive through that. And so we can't narrow it down even to just be a two-lane road and have tight little turns of corners and barricades because. Semis are going to get there and, and get stuck or run over the barricades. We can try and say it's only open east-west, you know, but. It's been closed all winter long and all, all spring. And so something's better than nothing is, is the intent of that one. The challenge with that is we still have. Um, access to the Porter's Whitey's Rock Valley building coming off of Leclerc Road. And if, if we don't have that open off of Leclerc Road, then you have to. Shift back and say they're only accessible from North First Street, which is a change in traffic pattern for them that, you know, which just confuses customers and patrons. Um. So that, that's where we're at. It's either keep it close for another week and a half, try to open it to east-west traffic. Try to open it to four-way traffic, but understand that, that we'll have some barricades out there. That it's going to be confusing, um. And to your point, there, there are, there will still be workers out there. When the grinding happens, it's, it's essentially one lane operation, but they're going to do it in every lane. And so they. Back and forth, back and forth, up, down, up, down. And then striping is similar. If, if you've seen city crews try to stripe under traffic, it doesn't look all that fun. But they, they've committed to doing it and they, they really. They don't have a choice. They, they have to deal with it. But that's where we're at. It's, it's about a week, two weeks essentially.
Greg, when they grind the road. I'm not sure if all the seal cracking has been done because you can't get access to everything to look at it.
Yep.
But when the machine's doing its process of leveling the road out. That probably, I'm assuming will grab some of that CO cracking. So some of that will need to be touched up. And redone as well.
Yeah. And it, it'll be a contractor expense. All of this is a contractor expense. Uh, the grinding is, is a result of, of. How they finish the concrete and so they will be spending the money for the ground. The city doesn't pay that. Um. So if cracked sealant material is, is lost, they'll be responsible for putting it back. It will be. Millimeters of, of grain. We're not talking six inches of, of highs and lows. If you driven the newest stuff, it's not. Not a terrible ride. Um, it, it, most of it would have passed the typical test. It's just because we've added this higher level of smoothness that more of it's going to need ground. So, uh, I guess I'll solicit your thoughts on that. Then I'll say, uh, they will be charged working days. Essentially, not, not essentially, they will be charged working days until it is substantially complete. And that means straight traffic signal work and, and everybody's driving. So, um, according to their current schedule, that's nine days from today. They have enough time for that. They have about twenty-one days left in their contract. Um, so they won't be overtime. They'll actually be essentially a couple of weeks early. But they do also have to do the seeding work. And so we've been talking about that internally. The DOT has basically said they will pay for seeding loss as part of the contract. And any additional seeding that has to happen would be either a city expense, which we don't want, or at the contractor's expense. And and pending tomorrow's confirmation, the contractor has offered uh this solution. Um do the permanent seeding now. It will most likely remain dormant through the summer. It will start to to have a fighting chance in the fall. August fifteenth is when the DOT typically wants you to to says that's a viable time to start putting down grass seed um is August fifteenth and beyond. So come August fifteenth, we'll see how the seed looks. We'll see if it's already grown, if it's started and died, if it's dormant, and in a couple of weeks, we're gonna have it. But any reseeding that would need to happen because it did get seeded now, which is not an ideal time, Valley will cover it. And so they just really want to be able to leave the site with no equipment in in finished condition and then be optimistic that it rains. And if it doesn't rain, if it doesn't rain enough, they come back in the fall and they do the seeding like they should typically do.
Is that gonna be seeded in or hydro seeded?
It's hydro seeded with hydro mold. So it's that stuff that's green for a day and then it turns kind of Spanish yellow. But they have to do something in the summer. Uh and what's odd is that uh I mean, the DOT will not let you leave bare soil for two months. And so they have to do some form of temporary seeding. And what's interesting is in the DOT's world, temporary seeding in a city is is the same as permanent seeding. It's low grass and pesky. In the in rural areas, they're okay with oats, uh because oats will grow quick and they'll grow in just about any weather. The problem with oats is they also grow tall and they don't look good. They look like weeds. And so having an intersection full of oats is not a desirable thing. So whether we put down permanent seed or temporary seed, it's literally gonna be the same amount of seed. Granted, we use a salt tolerant mix because we're in a s- an area that's gonna get salted, so we have some slightly different mixes than the temporary seed. But it's it's really a temporary grass seed mix. Has no better chance or worse chance of growing than what we're gonna presumably put down. So that's one decision that that I'm not specifically asking for input because we're not inherently gonna change costs unresultively. Um you're welcome to to tell me if you think it's a bad idea, but essentially, Valley should don't cover the cost of that if they have to reseed anything.
When they milled that and or rips up the crack sealant and all that, that'll have to be power groomed or blowed up with compressed air, right, to get a virgin surface for the paint and crack sealant and all that. So that's another process besides resealing the cracks. All that surface has to be prepped with a power groomer, compressed air, to make it clean for the paint.
Yeah, absolutely. So um the when we, anybody puts down concrete anymore, they spray this curing compound on it, and the intent of that is to hold water in the pavement, but it's literally a wax. And so if you spray that curing compound and then try to paint it, you're literally painting wax and it won't won't stick. And you see that in parking lots and things like that. So yeah, they will grind as part of the striking operation. They either um do a a narrow grind, you see that sometimes, power washing or even sandblasting to get just where the the line symbols are, to get that truly clean and ready for paint to stick. So they will absolutely be doing that.
And just like listening to the conversation there, Greg makes some good points here, gives options, but then Chief Sisters got the right idea. You're just keep the same clothes until it's done. Reports an opportunity that it's finally done. You've opened it up one time, a predetermined time. You've got ribbon cutting here. You know, Mark would all be a terrific story at the same time. And then it's it's done. And the confusion part of it is they're bad enough to this. So I I would suggest that you guys wait, just let it's all done and have a grand opening and cut the ribbon and we go.
I'm I'm happy that that is, that they were able to compress the grinding and striping schedule down to next week because up until today, they had not committed to that. And that would inherently be their problem, not not mine or ours. But then it's if that intersection is not open, it's everybody's problem. If they took three months to get a grinding contractor in, because that's a specialty contractor, not not many people do that. We'd be charged in working days for three months and they'd be in very heavy liquidated salaries. Great, but the streets still aren't open. So I I I'm was happy to hear that unfortunately, yes, it needs to be ground, but thankfully, they were able to schedule a grinder at the beginning of next week and a paint stripe for immediately afterwards. Um I was I was worried up until this afternoon that we'd have a different schedule and we'd be talking about weeks long. This one, uh again, barring any changes and and good weather, it's open a week before um Eldridge Days and
Mr. Chief.
I'm I'm all for keeping it closed until it's done. Um there's a simple reason that people are driving around barricades and people. And and if we've got, if it's only, we're only talking a week and a half to two weeks, even three weeks. So I I think that this is a, this is something that we need to let let time run out on it.
Yeah, and I'm I'm in favor too, especially being with fire and medic. It's just a safety thing when people are trying to go around their barricades. Um and then, like he said, the lights are gonna have turn signals that are gonna have lanes. It's just too confusing and it's just a safety risk. So I I know a lot of people are waiting desperately to get this open. But for a week and a half, the safety measures just make more sense to leave it closed. And then the Eldridge people want us to do it right the first time. So this way, we know that it's gonna be striped correctly. We know everyone's gonna be safe. And in a week and a half, we're good.
Anyways, John, you're Blackwell.
All right, that is congruent with everybody, Chief, and the rest of the council members, or or former mayors as well. Individuals who spoke out with that. Only benefit I can see with having partially open or particular turn lane. Heading on there, heading east is the air show this weekend. Individuals who may want to come to support Eldridge and all this eateries, sites, sites and silos of Eldridge, making it beneficial, easy for them to access those points. I'll be the detour setup are are fairly good directions. So individuals still wanted to head north to support Eldridge. Get our amenities. They'd still come up to the air show, join back to eat and cool off. So that's fine. Only, only concern that I have, and I've expressed this before, is regarding the time that we take. So I mean, you guys have proper oversight and all that. Seeing everybody out there, even in the valley last week, meeting. You know, lighting it center square there, looking at everything, so making sure everything's checked about, so you look pro there. So that's great. Uh you know, we've been, we've been sticked before, you know, by them a few times, you know, just that's not exaggeration. With them coming back, if the seed doesn't take per se, it's very dry, nothing's really growing unless you water it. What's the likelihood of them coming back? What type of what type of situation do you have up your hand to ensure that they do come back, to put the seed down in the fall? And anything else that needs to take place? You know, this 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 grinding and and spraying and stuff. Yes, we're looking at monies. So maybe that would no causing to be a little more efficient regarding the work. But I'm just worried about them coming back in the fall. Once they pack it up in town, are they really coming back to Eldridge, the way you've been treating before previously?
Yeah, I certainly can't speak for them, but uh contractually, they have to. Um and and it's a DOT contract with fifteen hundred dollar a day liquidated janitors that really don't get waived for any any reason whatsoever. Um we will have a retention because the project won't be closed out until such time that grass is growing. Uh and the DOT's definition or the DNR's definition is seventy percent growth. They basically throw a hula hoop on the ground and visually check and see if about seventy percent of that green grass or not. If it is, it's considered grass is growing, it's gonna keep growing. If it's not, they need to do more. So there'll be a retention up until that point if green grass is up and down the quarter.
Right, right. You know, it's a heavy downstorm, it's dry, it's a heavy downpour. Clay is gonna be rock solid. Everybody expects runoff. So that's gonna get washed away. You're gonna have tons of spots. So like, they've got to come back. I want to make sure they're reinforcing them. So they're doing their work because they've been through the wrongs.
So I guess there is a second item that that's just, it's kind of a a general update of what I've given you and then a change order um to to consider. So if you saw in the packet, there is a a sixth change order proposed, and it includes essentially three items. One is is the discussion we had last time, the traffic signal arm, if you remember. One was ordered, one was designed at seventy feet, but because bolts were used in the wrong place. Seventy foot is not sorted by structural calculations and wind load. Sixty-six feet is. Um and sixty-six feet is still long enough to do exactly what we want, which is put the traffic signal heads in the right place. Seventy foot honestly is because we ordered these things in ten point increments. We needed more than sixty, the less than seventy, so you go seventy. It's what's out there now is still not the the right pole. There's an extension or the uh uh, yeah, an extension pole that they need. And so right now, if you when the strike gets out, it'll be a little more apparent. But if you're northbound on First Street, you'll see the last few traffic signals on the outside are a little too close. They'll fix that. But what they're proposing, uh the traffic signal in its entirety was a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar pay item. And that's for the computers, the arms, the lights, the whole shebang. Um they are proposing a ten thousand dollar T-Dog uh in recognition of of, obviously, you're not getting the seventy foot, aren't you, spec? And there was some rework or some review associated with working through this change. Um and so ten thousand dollars is definitely, I mean, it's a higher value than what that three and a half ton of metal was actually worth. So I I guess from our our from our standpoint, we would recommend acceptance of this ten thousand dollar credit because it's essentially, you're still getting what you need. Um it's just not presentable. But also on that change order is is two uh new patterns. One is River Rock, one is Topsoil, for instance, right? Topsoil, I'll I'll explain is is the expectation at the beginning of the project, the way that's structured is there's grass growing out there now. We're gonna put down more pavement. And so whatever the grass is growing in, we're gonna strip it off, put it in the pile, and then spread it back where we need grass to grow at the end of the job because we had grass growing. Well, the reality of it was, um through a hundred something years of that being a road with a gravel shoulder and gravel road at some point, that railroad with all the rock ballast, there wasn't a lot of good topsoil on that site anywhere. Um they they salvaged the best they could, oh, I guess, and used it on the city's shelf property. It's not great yet. They still promise that that they're gonna clean that up really well. But um for the north side of the project, number one, we don't have material that's even close to that quality. And number two, those are all private enterprises, right? We've got two or three buildings of of residents over at Second and Leclerc. And I guess the, from our standpoint, we don't have good material left on site. So we'd like to import some good material. And so this price uh and and tonnage, sure, yeah, it's three hundred and twelve cubic yards of topsoil at forty-three dollars and sixty cents. It's a fair price. It's probably an overestimate on the quantity of material we need, but it's better to be safe than sorry. We would recommend this because there really wasn't enough to get topsoil left on the project site. So this would be screams of topsoil coming from one of those commercial developments in Davenport where they've got the topsoil and nice black dirt. They run through a screen where it's essentially pedal sized. They bring it in and spread it, and it'll be great stuff. The River Rock is is um a a recognition, if you looked at the northeast corner of the intersection, uh there used to be that flower bed that that I think lines are optimists maintained, a lot of grass at the city mode. It was flat, it was wide. Uh it it was fine to do. If you look at it now, it's narrow, it's steeper than it was before because the infection grew so much. And it's interspersed with about ten traffic signal poles, light poles, uh traffic signal controllers and and transformers. There's not a lot of good area left to try to grow grass. And you'd be trimming most of it with a weed eater. You wouldn't be mowing it. And so our thought is for uh this, it's not even an additional thirty-five hundred because it was about six hundred dollars worth of dirt and seed work we would have been doing. So it's less than three thousand dollar add. So just fill that area in with River Rock. It's consistent with what that adjacent property has, property across the street. It's no maintenance, there's no mowing or trimming or anything of that nature. So all told, this looks like an add of of seven thousand dollars. It's it's really not not quite that. It's probably about six, sixty-five hundred. So this would help button up those corners of the intersection that as we'd finish up, that's a little left.
Greg, I totally agree with the River Rock there. That noise has been like for some time, it would be easier to maintain that. Only thing underneath regarding growth, is there any type of weed barriers that we'd be putting down to help prevent weeds from growing up?
Yeah, one of those typical weed fabric and then four inch to rock on top of it.
Right. And when I was looking at soil previous, so just, you know, and and wanted to bring this up tonight just to see, I know, and brining up all the rush workers back there. Do we have anything that can offset? Do we have anything next to the lagoon, barrel burnout, that we can haul in? Is there still soil there that we need to utilize? And so paying this amount and hoping, say, a tax fair is a little bit money?
We have a small pile, but that pile, Adrian, we actually had to buy from McLeary. I mean, right, it wasn't free. We had to, we had to buy that.
I didn't know. It was like some destruction projects that be stored there or?
We had a big pile, but obviously, black topsoil is not commodity anymore. So nobody gives us their old or not to do stuff anymore. So really, yeah, I mean, I don't even think there's enough there, Adrian, to probably do what we need to do. And if we did, I guess we'd be off.
There's nothing, nothing with uh J J Martin's farm with the compost, so some big files there, it appears to be haven't been used. You know, is it gonna utilize that in the fall or is that something they can offset since that's?
I haven't been out there, Adrian. I know this dirt that Greg's talking about is actually, you know, brown, dirt machine. And right, so ready to work with. Most of the dirt that we bring in from out there, and then we run the road until our grid or run until the first. Greg's a hundred percent right. You know, even where the old feed store was, we filled that in with bad dirt because we just were trying to fill in a hole. So I think purchasing the better mile, I don't think, like, I agree with Greg, it probably won't end up being that much. Because we've agreed to accept a little less on the city property, as long as they got the big chunks of concrete. Schools accepted theirs, but the other businesses, I believe, deserve, you know, a good quality product at the end, I think.
That's the way.
I don't have the outlets, any other outlets for dirt that I know. If I do, we can, we can call them. And I don't know if that's possible, Greg, we buy dirt or not. This is in contractor outfit.
I suppose you could. Um Valley's price was essentially twenty bucks per cubic yard purchase price, seventeen to truck it from Davenport here and then six dollars and sixty cents to actually blaze it, finish it, smooth it out. So it's it's not unreasonable. And and the twenty dollar per cubic yard price is is literally what it costs to go buy it from that outfit. I'm not sure. I don't know that the city's cost would be significant.
Any more questions for Greg? With that being said, do I hear a motion to approve change order six as presented? Motion by Collins, second by Chief, to approve the First and Claire Intersection Project Change Order Number Six as presented. We'll call.
Chief.
Aye.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Peter. Collins.
Aye.
Consideration of Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash sixteen. Resolution setting salaries for employees in the city of Eldridge, Iowa for the year July one, two thousand twenty-three till June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Eldridge, Iowa, if section one following persons and positions' names shall be paid salaries and wages indicated beginning July one, two thousand twenty-three. The city staff is authorized to issue warrants less legally required or authorized deductions on the amount set out below on a five-weekly basis. Make any contributions to Hipers, Social Security, or other purpose as required by law and authorized by the City Council, all subject to audit and review by the City Council. All resolutions or parts of the resolution conflict are here with and hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Do you have a list of everybody? Should that be corrected, Nevada?
Yes, we'll correct that.
You have any any questions on salary and wages?
And this is, this is just a union increase, correct, that we've already agreed upon for a five-year? Is that correct?
Everything was the three percent except for um a previously approved wage adjustment for some of the public works. And there was an increase to one of the uh Part Four, Part Ten employees um that was voted on that there, needing and approved. Everything else was the standard three percent.
I have no other question.
I'm.
I'm making a motion that we accept, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three sixteen.
Sorry, Greg. Motion by Chief, second to Blackwell. Prove us, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash sixteen. We'll call.
Collins.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Dr. Ian Peters are absent.
Thank you guys for your work. What you, what you guys do.
Thank you.
Very good. Two, two. So thank you guys for your work.
We appreciate it.
The next one you have here from this is an ordinance. Finding the word sign. Jeff, can they call on you for this?
Uh, sure. You recall a couple of months ago, we, uh, changed our sign ordinance. Um, in between now and then, I had a conversation with one of our, uh, attorneys on another matter. Uh, that attorney recommended, um, that we remove the, we strike the second sentence from the definition of the word sign in our city code. Um, the attorney at that time said that, uh, they would make enforcement of, of the ordinance a lot easier and we wouldn't be dictating con- content. Was the recommendation. So, um, the definition of sign is a structure or device designed or intended to convey information to the public in written or pictorial form. The part that we're proposing to strike says, however, a sign shall not include any display of official court or public office notice, nor shall it include the flag emblem or insignia of the nation, political unit, school or religious group. Um, so.
Anybody that wants to choose? Do you have any questions for? Yeah.
Just for, just, just for clarification. So we were talking about the global signs electric and the mission before, what's aware and how they, and how hard that where this is formally flowing signs that may display a, a American figure, what's, what's?
Correct. And, and all of that, like the political signs itself has a separate section in the sign ordinance that defines where those can be and what sizes they can be.
Right.
Along with, along with every sign.
Um, just want to make, make that note from public. So.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash fourteen, an ordinance amending title D, chapter two, section five. Definition of the Elder City Code by amending the definition of sign, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with the ordinance and providing for an effective date. Section one, title D, chapter two, section five. Definitions is amended by removing the following language. Sign, a structure or device designed or intended to convey information to the public in written or pictorial form. However, a sign shall not include or display any official court or public office notice, nor shall include the flag emblem or insignia of a nation, political unit, school or religious group. Section two, title D, chapter two, section five, definition is amended by adding the following language. Sign, a structure or device designed or intended to convey information to public in written or pictorial form. Section three. Repealer, all ordinances, resolutions and parts of this ordinance and resolution in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section for effective date, this ordinance shall take effect on its passage and publication as provided by law. Your motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-three fourteen.
Make motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. For, for First Street.
Thank you. Who is the second?
I just, I think Councilman Chief there, he probably has the best being, being a veteran serving this country. I, I look, I guess with me, I would like more information as to, as to where this came from and what other municipalities are doing. Um, you know, you have school located on there as well. If school wants, if North Scott wants to create something on there or you go to say, no, we can't put your NS up there because of your school. So I haven't got to a point, you know, with our, with our country and our freedoms being taken away, that we can't display an American flag, you know, on a sign or figure bill. So I guess, I guess that's, I guess that's my concern, or maybe not concern, but maybe reservations. And so if you look at this a little bit more and see kind of where this, where this come from, what's been done, what potential of lawsuits that occur to municipalities and, um, this is more, maybe it's a more act, maybe. I mean, I don't know if I'm being unreasonable with that, but I would like to, I would, before we proceed, I just want to see how this would, how, how this would limit us in our freedom of speech, per se. So.
It doesn't limit you. The definition that we have currently limits you. That's why we're have been suggested by the attorney that we take it out.
That we remove that.
Because it's currently eliminate, because we are currently dictating content of signs.
Okay.
Which is against the First Amendment.
Okay. So the fact that this by, by us approving this, it would, it would give more, it would give more freedom of speech.
Correct.
Per se.
Yes. I think they're taking it as the reverse of what it was effectively initially.
Okay. Well, well, I just wanted to be, uh, I just wanted to be certain with that regarding, we're gonna have to differ language and, and what's, you know, what's been done and so forth too. And with that, with that being said, I guess it would help us to regard freedom of speech and what's, what's in hate speech and so forth too. But, but I think we remain cognizant of that. And when about something like that in our community. But I, I want to make sure people are free to, to display the American flag with that or, or expulsion to North Scott schools. And I think that's important. You got guys there who, who, who are in the service of that, you know, with that and not being able to do that. So I wanted to be certain that, that we weren't, that we weren't limiting anything to that. So, Councilman, did you have a thought?
Well, I, I was thinking the same way you are. Uh, I don't like the idea of taking the American flag off of the signs. Um, being a veteran, and I think Joe probably feels the same way. We both served under that flag. That flag means a lot to us. A lot of our friends gave their lives for that flag. And I don't have a problem seeing a flag anyplace. That's American flag. Now, some of the other flags I have problems with, but that one I don't. Uh, I think that that needs to be maybe specified that we should be able to use the American flag in, or the Star Spangled Banner on the signs.
And, and in the flag section of our current ordinance, it specifically says that American flag is a flag that you're allowed to flag.
So right there and with our attorneys and what's been done and it's, it's, it's opening us, it's, it's opening some, some living us and. Correct.
Very, very.
Yeah. Because right now, the, the attorney's opinion was that it, that we are dictating content, uh, which was, you know, against the First Amendment. And which is why it should be removed. I don't know how that sentence ever got added, but for what, or why.
I think what Jeff's saying, and I kind of agree from what he's saying to say, what it currently states, it restricts the freedom of speech on the First Amendment.
Mm-hmm.
More take, I think, taking that off your old name where you have freedom of speech.
Right.
Where the First Amendment's being protected.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Just wanted to be, just wanted to be certain. We have that, six schools and flags and then you start.
Yeah. Everything.
You want to be.
Everything, everything you just said is, if we're adding that, that's where you'd be correct.
Right.
If we're removing it. Yeah. So we're removing the name.
It's a major one of that. You're correct. Well, with that, with that made assurance, I'm, I'm okay with that. Well, because Councilman Collins, but if you.
I did make a motion.
You made a motion in the back.
Yes.
Councilman, if you want to. So.
I'll second.
Is your right to, sir?
I'll second.
All right.
Motion by Collins, second by Chief, to approve the first reading of ordinance, ordinance two thousand twenty-three fourteen. We'll call.
Collins.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Dr. Ian Peters are absent.
I read this about this, this, uh, resolution here was kind of modeled after the one that we use for you, correct?
Correct.
Resolution two thousand twenty-three seventeen, a resolution for approving the hiring and appointment of a city clerk. Whereas the city of Eldridge desires to employ the services of Martha Nito, an individual who possesses the request, requires an education, training and experience of local government, finance and as city clerk of the city of Eldridge, as provided title A, chapter three of the city of Eldridge municipal code and whereas is the desire of the council, want to secure and retain the services of the employee and provide document for her to remain in such employment to, to make possible full work, productivity, ensuring employees morale and peace of mind with respect to future security and three, set forth certain financial terms and conditions and four, to provide the means for terminating the agreement if necessary. And whereas it is the desire of the city of Eldridge, city council to provide certain conditions of employment and to set working conditions of employee. And whereas employee desires to accept employment of the city clerk of the city of Eldridge effective July tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore, in consideration of mutual covenants herein contained, parties agree as follows. Number one, the city is conditionally offering employment to Martha Nito as city clerk, subject to her passing a criminal background check, as well as the city's drug and alcohol screening test. Two, employee is an at-will employee at the term is implied pursuant to the Iowa code. Continued employment is at the pleasure of the city council. Three, duties, subject to the direction and supervision of the employer, employee shall perform the duties employment position as codified in title A, chapter three of the municipal code. The city of Eldridge as further described as a job description, employment policies of the city of Eldridge and assigned by the city administrator from time to time. The duties assigned by the employment position by the employer may be enlarged or reduced from time to time as recently acquired satisfy the needs of the employer. Four, exclusive employment. Boy shall devote substantially all of the employee's customary work time to the performance of the duties assigned to the employment position during the term of this employment agreement and any extension thereof, and unless otherwise approved by resolution of the council, employee agrees to remain in exclusive employment of the employer. Number five, schedule. Employee shall perform the duties as set forth in title A, chapter three of the Elder City Code and as otherwise assigned to the employment position during the normal business hours, subject to reasonable adjustments of the employee's working schedule by the employer to meet the necessary requirements of the municipal operation. It is understood that the employee must devote a great deal of time outside normal office hours to attend the business of the employer. Employee shall devote whatever amount of time is required to conduct the office of the duties, the city clerk in a reasonable competent manner. As an FLSA exemption employee, no considered time will be earned for work of about forty hours per week. However, the employer recognizes that the employee must devote a great deal of time outside normal business hours to do business for the employer. And to that end, employees allow flexibility and reasonable discretion in scheduling work hours, business hours. The normal business hours for the city are presently from eight AM to four thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Other designated hours, employees shall attend all meetings and functions of the city council scheduled outside the normal business hours designated above as required by the city council and are certain to perform the duties and employment of the position. Employee shall also perform such duties as may be required by the mayor of the city of Eldridge. Eight, performance review and annual planning. The city administrator shall provide the employee a written employment review in three months and six months following commencement of her employment for the city. Annually, honor before January first, employees shall, in conjunction with the city administrator collectively define and write such goals and performance objectives which they determine necessary for the proper operation of the city and an achievement of the council's policy objectives, and shall further establish a relative priority among those various goals and objectives. They shall generally be obtained within the time limitation specified in the annual operating and multi-year capital budget projected appropriations provided. Nine, salary. Once successful completion of the testing, employee shall be paid an annual salary of seventy-one thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars per rated in the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year for the city. Number ten, payroll taxes. Of compensation payable under this agreement shall be subject to withholding for federal and state income taxes, social security taxes and other employment taxes as required by law for common law employees. Eleven, raises. Employee will receive a cost of living raise effective July one, two thousand twenty-four for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year for the city and subsequent payroll raises starting in twenty-five, twenty-six, subject to the approval of city council. Number twelve, employment-related mileage. Employees entitled to mileage reimbursement for her motor vehicle traveling during the course of employment duties for the city at the current IRS rate. Number thirteen, employee service classification. For purposes and employment benefits, employee shall be classified as an employee with two years of service with the city. A third year of service with the city shall cure an employee's one-year anniversary. Number fourteen, vacation. Employee shall be entitled to two weeks of vacation per year, per rated for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year for the city. For the personnel policy, a third week of vacation shall accrue after employee's eighth year of service. Number fifteen, paid leave. In addition to vacation days, employee also shall be entitled five days of paid leave as described in the city personnel policy. Number sixteen, scheduled absences. Scheduling of vacation and paid leave shall be subject to the employer's approval based on the reasonable and necessary requirements of the employer's operations. Employee shall not be absent with paid vacation leave for more than fifteen consecutive days. Number seventeen, city holidays. Employee shall be titled to a holiday leave without any reduction of basic compensation for the holiday designated in employee personnel policies of the employer equal to that which is provided to all the other administrative employees of the employer. Number eighteen, health, dental, life and disability insurance. Employee and dependents shall be entitled to participate in employer's group health insurance, dental insurance, disability insurance, life insurance program in accordance with the employee personnel policies equal to which is provided to all the other administrative employees of the employer. Employer agrees that the death benefit of the life insurance policy shall be on the same basis as other employees. Number nineteen, retirement plan. Employee elects to opt out of the Iowa public employees retirement system IFRS as allowed by law. Employer agrees to contribute an alternative four fifty-seven B retirement account at the contribution rate equal to that which is defined by IFRS under the same term as eligible by city employees' signature. This is witness to the agreement and according to whether resolution number twenty-three seventeen, the city council of prior employee having said this instrument through the nineteenth day of two thousand twenty-three. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution two thousand twenty-three dash seventeen, hiring Martha Nito for the city clerk position?
Someone who's here. Second.
Motion by Collins, second by Chief, to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three dash seventeen, hiring a new city clerk. We'll call.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Dr. Ian Peters absent.
Mary, do you need to amend this previous, uh, twenty twenty-three sixteen? Give her an amen and a salary on there for this order, for this resolution, or is this carried over to the faculty that? Not a waste of a place. Twenty twenty-three sixteen.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sure.
Right. We should carry it over to the twenty-three sixteen.
But, yeah, we'll, we'll address that.
A and D discussion of cost sharing agreement with the community center for work. Tony, can I call on you on this? Tony, can I call on you on this? Do you know anything about their services other Jeff, do you know?
I can, yeah, I was at that meeting and they asked me to bring it from the council, so I can give a general overview and then perhaps other city staff might know more specifics about it. In the center board meeting last week, they discussed a bill that they had for one thousand one hundred and eleven dollars that was for generator maintenance. After some questions were asked, it was determined this was a twice-a-year fee that was incurred to change the oil, test the system, do any other general needs and so on. Since the community center is an emergency shelter for the city of Eldridge and surrounding area, the community center board is respectfully asking that this charge be paid out of or shared with another city equipment fund on an ongoing basis in order to free up funds in their budget for facility maintenance.
Is three that does it, or who goes there?
That I don't know.
And my next question is, why is it twice a year, not just once a year?
Yeah, and, and maybe we need to look at that and see what other services are available, see if something you heard.
Yes, we're under pretty stringent rules and regulations, a grant even, we're only required to do it once a year.
And was anybody else that's that know anything about this though?
Some do it twice a year, some do it once. At the West Water Plant, we used to have a P and M in the spring where they changed the oil and did all that. Then they came back in the fall and checked in the filters and it was two different costs, it was more expensive in the spring and the fall. Six or seven years ago, I worked on that and just two once a year.
I think we could ask Keith as well, because Keith is someone that's scheduled for the same point, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's an emergency schedule, so.
But that's a question we could ask him, right? Should we just cut down once a year?
Doesn't this discussion, it would be possible, it was going to be the same thing.
Regardless of that, would you entertain any cost sharing, or you'd rather keep it in the community center question then?
Well, I think since it's an emergency shelter and a, and a, and it's a asset of the city, I think if it could be reduced to once a year, whatever those costs would be for once a year, I think I think it would be fair to say that we share that with them.
Right. That's why, that's, that was my thought. With the, let's look, see, the maintenance can be reduced, save money. But since it's a small purchase, yeah, excellent shelter, emergency shelter, yeah. It makes for, very sure.
I will look into it, talk to Keith, then we'll see what other options are available.
Should I hear a motion to approve splitting the cost, even if it's done to an annual basis with the community center?
If it's, if it's done on an annual basis, we say, same. Well, I guess. There's, there's, maybe it can, right, it's something's averting, no, no, if, if it can be done as you look into it, so.
Okay.
So, but I'll make it, I'll make a motion with that then.
Can I hear a second?
If that makes sense, no, I'll second, I was worried.
Okay, yeah. Motion by Blackwell and second by Chief to approve the cost-sharing agreement with community center, if it can be done on an annual basis to share the cost for general maintenance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, aye to Evan. Yes, can I call on you on the sidewalk?
Yes, ma'am. This has turned into a somewhat contentious issue as of late. But the city staff throughout my seven or eight months here and all throughout two thousand and two to present, it has been unified in requiring sidewalks for all developments. And we've been enforcing the sidewalk ordinance as written due to the fact that not having sidewalks in some areas of town has presented problems for us. We've been receiving pushback on this, the city staff has, from developers on this issue, particularly in industrial developments lately. Since there are several new city staff members, and maybe even some new members of city council since this was last discussed, I'm just seeking clarification this issue, because I think you will be receiving an assessment sidewalk where we were requested shortly from an industrial developer. Right now, the sidewalk ordinance as written says sidewalks are required on both sides of all streets in all residential subdivisions. Sidewalks are required in any commercial or industrial subdivision where pedestrian traffic is not otherwise served. When any subdivision is adjacent to an existing street and may contain lots with multiple street frontages, the city council may require the developer to grade and or install sidewalk on the adjacent street concurrently with the construction or other required subdivision improvements, or at such other time as the council may determine appropriate. So when I read that, it says sidewalks are required in any commercial or industrial subdivision where pedestrian traffic is not otherwise served, to me that means if there's no sidewalk there, then a sidewalk has to be put in to serve that pedestrian traffic. I'm not sure what other means there would be to serve the pedestrian, unless perhaps there's a bike trailer or something along there. So where this is coming into issue is on South Eleventh Avenue in the Blacktop Trails, Industrial Park Division, and in North Sixteenth Avenue, when you get into the Lancer Park subdivision. So as it stands right now, city staff is unified and I believe in agreement on this issue. There's city staff present that can speak on this if they wish, but we are enforcing this as the code, you know, says that I as the zoning enforcement official have to enforce it. And so I just would like your opinion on it. Move, or are we, is this the school's best interest, or am I doing my job properly, is this what you want me to do, and are you going to back me up when we're second assessment waivers as around these issues?
Well, this is, this supported as far as I have, you know, the government's support, almost thirty years. I'm a big advocate regarding safe walkways for residents, especially our children, whether, whether they want to school. Looking at, I can say hand there, like more in the industrial area, however, you have to think about the workers who might, on the, get somewhere by foot, come on, get outside and walk and exercise in your limits. But I think we should remain steadfast with these ordinances to include that any new subdivision, any, any type of development includes a sidewalk. Be my goal, eventually to connect every residential pathway, on the news, surface, walkway, sidewalk altogether. So, so we have safe ways all around the town of Eldridge, that, that's my rule. I would want to see this continue, you would have my support with it, with, with enforcing it. And put that out there so people first can hear that. If you're going to come to you up here, we welcome you. However, we want you to follow that ordinance to ensure that you are putting sidewalks to maintain the safety of our pedestrians.
Mr. Chief.
Has any has there been any grandfather in where they don't have to?
Yeah, lots. I mean, if you drive around, there's even residential areas in older parts of town that don't have sidewalks. There's, but yeah, there, there's been areas, I mean, there's, if you go north on North Sixteenth Avenue, there's no sidewalks anywhere, they've all got curb cuts. And some of them, I believe, have fired, filed assessment waivers that were approved in the past, some of them. It was just waived for some reason or another, but I, I believe that other staff members have been told by attorneys that if you try to collect on this assessment waiver, you might as well just to the city, don't put the sidewalk in because it's going to cost you more in lawyer fees than it is, you know, what the cost of the sidewalk would be if you tried to go back and maybe put a sidewalk after the fact.
Well, I, I agree, we need to have sidewalks. It should be all, everybody should have to put them in. But the ones that are grandfathered, then we will have to ignore them, is that correct?
If we, yeah, at such a time when we would ever want to. I know in the past, there's been, under Larry, Clint Larry, Rouse, and I, he started a program that the city would pay for half of the sidewalk. I know very few people, you know, took the city up on the offer at that time. You know, some sidewalks that went in. And this is basically, we're just enforcing this on all new development because that's where we have the authority to enforce it at the moment.
Fine with it. I guess I'm the new guy on the block, so I just want a little clarification, you know, residential, totally understand that we need to make sure sidewalks are done. I know there were some few issues when I just started where, you know, we couldn't go back after the fact to connect some sidewalks here in town. And it was really disturbing, especially in residential areas. I guess my question is, in industrial and commercial areas, does it make a hundred percent sense to put sidewalks? Don't believe that Gallowport makes commercial or industrial put sidewalks in, but they do residential. I, I'm with you guys, I want the safety of our residents, but the same sense, I want to make sure it makes sense for everyone involved too. So I would just like to talk more about industrial and commercial and, you know, if they want to, if they want to, you know, put the waiver in to see if we would, you know, stay steadfast, or if we think it makes sense that there's no other, you know, really traffic out there to be had for residents or for people to walk in an industrial area. And like, I think we should just look at it without any promises, but in the same sense, you know, we have to give Jeff and our building inspector clear, you know, definitive what we're looking for too. So I guess my answer is, I think with industrial and commercial, we should look at it on a case-by-case basis and then see if it makes sense or if it doesn't.
I have to, I have to agree with Dan said, like down at Amhoff, there's hardly anybody ever walking down in that area. And of course, there's new development down there, so along the one side, they should have it, on the other side, I, I just don't know about that. Because I don't see a lot of people walking there, I see a lot of driving, but not a lot of walking. So I, I think with the commercial and industrial, always, you should do it on a case-to-case basis.
This particular property also is repurposing existing parcel land that was already previously developed, correct, Jeff?
I, right, right now, we've got two out there, we've got one that's new development, empty parcel, and we've got another case that we're receiving pushback on that is.
Yeah, revirting, correct. On that new plot of land, a new development, have they actually processed their application, and have they done any sidewalk work?
No, I've both of them have been asked to submit a sidewalk assessment waiver if they would like to proceed past my level, which I've told them to do it. But neither one of them has given me, has turned in an assessment waiver yet. I expect at least one of them will. But, you know, I don't know, I've, I've requested it from both. And they're both of them in industrial areas where there's currently no other sidewalks.
That was my question, we're in a large amount of, I'm thinking of, that's all grass right there, the challenge connected right now, right?
Yeah, I've got another one on North Sixteenth with.
I mean, maybe this should be on case-by-case, especially if there's no sidewalk there right now. But then again, it's the constant future, future development that might be some companies that come, you know, that there's sidewalks there, and everybody doesn't drive, you're biking, other means transportation. People want to have a safe passage reasons.
Are you sure you want to include commercial in that, be my next question?
More industrial than commercial, honestly.
And I'm. I just want another process going forward, you know?
Right.
So if that process is if you don't wish to put in a sidewalk, you need to submit an assessment waiver to me, and I'll pass that on to the city council, and I'm, and that could be the policy, but take into account what the lawyers told us, that if we want to collect on that assessment waiver, it's, you know, not going to be cost-effective.
This is what I'm, I highly encourage to put in a sidewalk.
I tell them that you have to put it in because that's what they want. Tell them differently if you so choose, sure.
I could suggest that if, there was going to be a case-by-case basis, that that's going to be the process for industrial. I strongly recommend wording it that way and updating the ordinance, because it makes it really hard with Jeff and Ray to go out and develop these relationships with these developers, because it makes them look like the bad guys and hard to work with. And then bring it in front of council and they get the okay. So I think it's going to be a case-by-case basis that council decides for those industrial developers that we put that as the process of the ordinance, so that it makes the job a little bit easier for, for Jeff and Ray to go out and have those positive relationships, because they get, they catch a lot of kickback on trying to enforce the ordinance as written, and it gets pretty tough, it gets pretty loud.
I would go with that, so from a, a residential standpoint, residential definitely is, that has to be done. Commercial, do we look at that, you know, the closure of the town and walkways? Yes, industrial, I guess a lot of people might admit that. But, but changing that verbiage, but again, I encourage them to look at that, but it's good enough. It's interesting. It's a front, right? First street.
The second category.
Yes. I would hope that that be included as well, and you put that out there. I believe we have a good regulation relationship, you know, Scott now, it's been discussion. Running first street, fifth street, those ball of ours, possibly, looking to expand that, so. But yeah, that, that definitely needs to be, definitely needs to be done. First hand, you know, safety and reserved is top priority with that. We need to ensure safe routes to school, as I mentioned before.
I will work on it. Where needs changed then, during an amendment in the second hearing?
Do we need another classification of burden to schools, burden may fall, you know, regarding, what are they? We got residential, commercial, and so, are they, are they in or without Jeff?
Actually, there, there would be a public or municipal district, which isn't mentioned at all in the ordinance, so I could just. I would think that you would want them on both sides of the street and this, you know, the type of area. Currently, right now, the city owns Hickory Creek soccer fields, there's going to be a sidewalk there. That's in a municipal, public municipal district, just like the school is. So if we're done, you know, required for one, we're required for the other, right?
So be, so be looking, I mean, it's, no. But when that discussion was done, it's down, we're going to be, we're going to be rework the, the wastewater on the, on the burden. There was discussion later, we're going to put a sidewalk, you know, over, over those, over the sewer line, we should have done it at that time. But we got it out there, so, again, I'm, I'm in favor of, of, of pedestrian walkways, auto-recreation, so what we can do to see with expansion, those, we need to do so.
I will work on it, thank you, that answers my question.
Thank you.
No, I shouldn't be taking on that till we hear back from Jeff.
Yes.
Jeff, I'm going to call on you again.
Thank you, Mayor. So we recently discovered Pope Bridges as purchased property, thirty-four, twenty, South Eleventh Avenue, instead of Blacktop Trail Industrial Park. As purchased property, uh, thirty four twenty South eleventh Avenue, instead of Black Pop Trail Industrial Park. Um, so there's a map in your pack of this property. Uh. Well, going over their plans, uh, we discovered. That there's this triangle of land that's point one nine nine acres on the corner of that property. Um, that is owned by us, the City of Eldridge, and, uh, up until. Um, we had a meeting with them, asked some questions, I don't think anyone was aware of this. The City of Eldridge has not been maintaining that property. Um, but the Adner's office did send a map, um, with, with a label. Uh, that says City of Eldridge on it, um, that is recorded there. When you click on that parcel, it's, hasn't been assessed, there's no value assigned to it. Um, and it just says that there's no information available. Um. I've spoken to city staff, the city staff sees no value in this property. Um, city staff does not want to maintain this property. Um, so what I'm asking for, I guess, is permission to move forward. Um. And have the developer prepare a flat legal description of the property at their expense. Uh, giving the city a thirty foot plus or minus right away, um, as his own rest of the roadway there. And once this is done, we would sell this parcel to them for a dollar.
I, I don't see any problem with that, it, it doesn't look like you could really build anything on it. So it would benefit them, we wouldn't have to maintain it. So I'm. I think the, the offer would be, if, if they want it.
They do, and, um, they, yeah, their current plans, they have a range, um, located on that. According to parcel, they thought that was included in what they bought, only start until they had a survey and started looking into it, yeah. So it was a surprise to everyone involved when we found out that it was owned by the City of Eldridge.
To be the story of the right, right, that drain is on the table, maintain the upkeep on that.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, and they'll take care of all that, and we'll just need to, uh, you can kind of see on, on this map here, it's a little bigger, but. They just extend that right away straight across there, and there is. A, a parcel in between us and the next property that's still owned by the railroad, which, you know, is never probably gonna have a right of way across that. Or for that matter, sidewalk, because still by the railroad, um, here.
So speaking of that, it was pretty overgrown, looks like they, they, they cut and they might be removing ties. Is there any discussion with Gallowport extending their trail, or do you know what's going on there?
Um.
Can you speak on that?
I do not, I, I'd just be speculating, I believe it's a neighboring property that's.
I got excited about that Gallowport was connecting the trail. Hope Gallowport's listening, we want to partner with you guys, so. Boy, if, if they're gonna maintain that, you know, and due to our specs, they might see no problem, it's only one dollar, just get it on my hands, so they're gonna maintain it. And we have a right of way, and we need to go on there to do anything to it. I'm okay with that.
So they're gonna hear a motion.
Okay, so.
Hold on a second.
Motion by Blockwell, second by Chief to approve the proposal for property transfer of point. One nine nine acres from the City of Eldridge to focus storage, that costs one dollar. At the property address of thirty four twenty South eleventh Avenue, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ice habit. Gee. We have before us here a. Couple options for replacing the city's police department camera systems, Joe, I'm calling you on this.
Yes, so I'm gonna try to make this as simple and as brief as I can and try to explain it the very best I can. So we're already in the process of starting to look at, uh, our camera system. As our warranty has no longer been there and there's been a lot of new versions that we have to start looking at updating, but. WatchGuard is our current, uh, body cam and our in-car camera systems, and they have been bought out by Motorola. Uh, last year. I wanna say, I think we're informed. Right around August, September last year that Motorola bought him out, um. Motorola informed us, I had a couple of meetings with Motorola, um, they informed us that. They have updated several, the WatchGuard body camera and the squad car, uh, in-car system. And that would be what a lot of agencies were gonna be offered to look at updating all their equipment. Well. My process has been sped up now because about two weeks ago Motorola informed us that our. Current, uh. Evidence library that we download all of our cameras, uh, all of our video onto, uh. Starting July first, they will no longer support that program. So right now, we're kind of in, uh, a state where we have to get this figured out and something going immediately. Uh, we can't take our system and download it just anything, it has to be these certain evidence libraries that. Are part of the camera system that you currently have. So our fingers are gonna be crossed that. Our system will continue to operate until we get this figured out, uh, but the problem is, is if it goes down, it's down. Uh, Motorola is not gonna supply the support to fix that system. They did offer a Band-Aid, uh, the Band-Aid that they offered, it would be a site license, uh, for a thousand dollars. With a remote deployment cost of two thousand dollars and then a hundred and ninety five dollars per camera. Just for the, uh, per, uh, per year. Uh, until we get something figured out, uh, currently, we have. Eleven body cameras and seven squad car cameras, so I didn't do the math on the hundred and eighty five. Uh. So I apologize for that, so what I gave you was I did some research, I've talked to three different companies, um. Which are three of the most prominent companies that we can deal with, reference the body cameras and the in-car cameras. Uh, what I looked at was all quotes are for a five-year plan. Uh, which gives a five-year warranty and a five-year cloud evidence management, which is the upgraded, uh. Evidence management system for the cameras. Uh, this would be for eight in-car camera systems and eleven body worn camera systems. Uh, the first one you'll see on the handouts that I gave you is, uh, with Axon, their five-year contract is a hundred and sixty two thousand. Two hundred and thirty one dollars and thirty cents. Uh, with that five-year contract, they break it down into five payments, uh, for the five years. And actually, Axon breaks theirs down into ten payments, uh, they have one payment each year for the body worn and then one payment. Each year for the in-car cameras, the body worn cameras are in August and then the in-car cameras are due in January. And it runs all the way to eighty eight. Uh, included with the Axon, uh, Axon's also who law enforcement, uh, goes through to get our tasers. Uh, currently, right now, we are down four tasers, uh. And we're gonna be looking at trying to replace tasers. Well, Axon turned around and offered me six tasers with fifty percent off, which is pretty much buy one, get one free. Uh, which is a pretty good deal, uh. Also with Axon included in their five-year contract, uh, they're the only company that does this also is, uh, the third year. They replace all the body cameras and replace them with all the new versions, um, and that's part of the cost that's included into. Year number five, they replace all the body cameras again with the newer versions. And they replace all the squad car cameras, the in-car cameras with the newest, uh, most up-to-date version of the in-car cameras. Uh, and then we'd have an option to look at renewing our five-year contract, which, uh, with them replacing cameras. Gives us a pretty large savings if we stayed with them. Uh, the next company was Kel-Tec, it's a five-year contract, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and sixty one dollars and seven cents. For the five-year contract. They don't offer a payment plan, so a hundred and fifty thousand, five sixty one oh seven is due at the time that we would. Make an agreement with them. Uh. Forgot to say with Axon, they do send a team from Arizona, which is where they're based out of. Up to, they would send them up to Eldridge here and they would do all the installations. Uh, so that's also part of the payment in the contract. Kel-Tec also will send a team out here to do all the installations of the in-car cameras and get us all set up as well. With Motorola, uh, Motorola, their five-year contract is a hundred and ninety seven thousand, four hundred and seventy eight dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, they do a five-year contract that breaks it down into five yearly payments as well, uh. And as you see with Axon and Motorola, I broke down the payments, uh, what they would require. They do not come to do the installations, uh, we would have to take every squad out to Des Moines and have. All the squads, uh, get installed and then we'd have to also. Work with them over the phone to get all the hardware, uh, for the body cameras and also that, uh, having a cloud library set up. Um. My big push is what I really want to push for, because I really think that the city would save money in the long run, and I think it's, uh, a. Better system, uh, Axon is one of the, is definitely. One of the top-rated systems, uh, Motorola is not. You talk to a lot of agencies, a lot of us, uh, are not happy with Motorola. We have a lot of issues with the customer service and stuff like that, plus they're higher priced. Um, and plus, it's just not really feasible to start taking all of our squads because we will probably. We'd be losing officers off the street, we'd be losing squads, and we'd be putting miles on our squads and for gas, the whole mine yards. Just to take them all out to Des Moines to get them installed, um. Kel-Tec, I mean, they use the iPro camera, uh, iPro is. A good camera, um. So that's not, I wouldn't complain about that camera system either, but with Axon, being able to have our body cameras all replaced. The third year and fifth year, and also having our in-car cameras replaced on the fifth year, uh, to all the newer systems. That's a pretty big savings, uh. And then also with the tasers, uh, getting six tasers for the price of three is a pretty, uh, good deal. Uh, and that's one thing that they've learned for me, try to get us to go with them. Uh. I gave you two other, uh, page, uh, stapled documents, and you'll see with Axon on their in-car camera. Uh, it just shows, uh, with the in-car camera, with the total cost for the sixty months, and it shows you down on page one, the breakdown of the payment plan. Uh. Go through page three and stuff, it just gives you more explanation on as far as, uh, like, uh, you'll see the fleet refresh. Uh. Camera kit on, uh, January first, twenty twenty nine, that would be when they come in and actually report all the in-car camera systems. Just give you some information on that, and same with, uh, the form I gave you for the body worn cameras and the taser, it shows you how it's broke down. And it shows you that with the tasers, uh, that we also get. Uh. Total of forty-eight cartridges, uh, for the tasers, which those aren't cheap. Uh, and that comes when you have program two, which would save us some good money. Um, it's just for you to go ahead and look at, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, um. Well, my strongest recommendation out of this, out of the research I've done and talking with all the companies, uh, spending a. Just lower, uh, well, actually, it's probably a little under twelve thousand more for Axon, which is a top-rated company over the iPro. That's my suggestion, uh, but I'm here. Ask you guys that we're in dire needs right now, that we're gonna have to keep our fingers crossed at our current evidence library that we. Put all of our videos on. Things running until we can get this done, uh, right now, we're looking at anywhere. Just for the body cameras, up to six weeks to get body cameras in from any of the companies and then. Uh, most one for the in-car cameras, it can be up until about the first of the year. Uh, but Axon did tell me that they would put us on a rush order to get that done within September, October, of course. Um. Anybody have any questions about anything that I, you know, I know I kind of broke it down pretty quick and. I threw a lot at you guys, but.
Axon, they come here if you have any problems, right?
Axon comes here to do the install, but with them, if we have any problems, we do a, like a Zoom call. And they will do everything over Zoom with us, and if they need to, they will send people out here. If it's a problem, I cannot say it's so bad.
But we wouldn't have to take the car and the camera.
No, the only one that we have to take our squads anywhere is with Motorola. Be out to call emergency, uh, or would have to take their squads out to. Uh, Kel-Tec, they also do send a team here also. It's.
Just what this.
I'll talk about that here on another part.
Yeah, right, okay. So is that, I don't see. Motorola is, is the name recognition, but not on site, you're, us, that's almost. Two and a half hundred dollars.
Right.
She'd be original here with the Axon, possibly including additional warranties, looks like. Uh, that. Looking at that, the new tasers system discount, so what's, what, what, what's, what's that about? Can you explain that a little bit more?
As far as what?
So the six, it's a taser seven, and changes the system discount fifty percent off?
Yes, so what it is, it's, uh, they're offering us six tasers for, uh, it's pretty much buying three tasers, getting three for free. Uh, taser seven, right now, we actually have taser six, uh, taser seven is the new upgraded, uh, taser, uh. Every three to five years, they come out with a new taser. And taser seven's their newest taser that, uh, they have recently come out with. With that, it, it's just, uh, taser seven is also equipped where if an officer draws that from the holster. Automatically starts recording for body camera and the squad car camera, so there's no questions about it, it starts. It's triggers, it's all censored in there, that it will start, we can actually with Axon two. Uh, we can set Axon up to, if an officer draws his duty weapon, it'll start recording the body camera and the squad car camera as well. There's a lot more safety features with Axon, uh, we can actually look at. Anytime down the road, I didn't put it in here because it costs. A little bit more money to do, but it's something that we can look at where, uh, I know we've talked about LPR cameras. Uh, LPR cameras are, are plus where it's a license plate reader for LPRs, that's what it stands for. And what it does is, uh. As officers are driving around, uh, and right now, Scott County Sheriff's Department has this, and I believe Davenport has it too on some of their titles. I think they have it on all of them, uh. If it comes across, it's constantly replaced, if it comes across that it's a stolen vehicle, wanted vehicle, it pops up immediately on the officer's. Uh, computer screen, gives them an alert, uh, puts the plate up. Uh, right away, so that way the officer can make sure that that plate matches the vehicle that it's saying is hitting. And that's how there's a lot of the stolen cars are being picked up by agencies right now, it's through LPRs. Also with that system, uh, they have a where we can do what's called a live feed, uh. I'll just say, for example, if there's an active shooter situation, uh. We would have a command post, and during that time, within the command post, we would be able to. Go in live feed on any officers that have that camera system. In that situation, you would be able to see everything firsthand. On what's going on, and it would also allow us to direct other teams to go to another location. Or if an officer's out on a traffic stop and he has a question. You can call a supervisor, supervisor can log in, go into the live feed, you can actually be talking with the officer, seeing that things. As the officer's seeing it as well, and give direction on anything that will be coming out. But that's another part of the system, and Axon said we can add that system at any time down the road. We wanted to.
So another bit of info on Axon.
Yes, and, and Axon also with their program, uh, because we're required to have video with the county attorney's office and the court system. We don't have video on a lot of things. I can tell you, it, it hurts law enforcement because cases get thrown out without video. With the Axon, uh, system through our, uh, uh, evidence management system, what it does is the Scott County Sheriff or Scott County Attorney's Office would be given a form, they would fill it out. Axon would give them a login and password. So every time we have a video, the officer is required, they would have to go in, type in the incident number. They can type notes in, give a description of what the incident was. And then later on, if the county attorney needs video from that, they type that incident number in, that video pops up. That will save us a ton of money and a ton of time because right now Brenda spends hours, I mean, hours every week downloading videos on the DVDs. One case, we'll just say a traffic stop, let's say somebody gets arrested from driving a bar, uh, with that traffic stop, when she downloads that for the county attorney's office, it's a minimum of three, if not up to five DVDs. And it can take her out to three to five hours for video. And then on top of that, we have to transport those DVDs down to the county attorney's office. So there's times we go down there three, four times a week to deliver those. So we're taking the squad off the street and plus burning gas and add miles onto the car just to take DVDs down to the county attorney's office. Brenda says she pays twenty-five dollars. It's the cheapest price. She's been able to get twenty-five dollars for a hundred DVDs. She goes through several hundred of DVDs.
Okay, so on, uh, on the Axon, is that the one that, uh, when you pull one turn of the station, it would automatically record? You don't have to come in and download or anything?
Yeah, currently our system right now, officers have to come in. Uh, they have to take the body cameras and they have to take the thumb drive out of the squad for the in-car camera. They have to go to the computer that's set up with evidence library that we have and download all the video. Uh, with Axon, as they pull up in front of the police department, all videos are downloaded through the cloud. Uh, that's a system that the sheriff's department has, Dambler has, and that system works very well for them. It, it saves a lot of the time. Right now our officers, if they have eight videos on a thumb drive and their body cameras, they have to come in about thirty minutes before the end of their shift. It takes about at least thirty minutes, if not forty, forty-five minutes for them to download videos. And that has to be done at the end of every shift. So we have to have something for the county attorney. We have to have, so.
I forget the north brain portal for about, uh, that back, you know, including the TASER seven system. Also, we discussed before the LPR systems and that's, that's needed on all the on these vehicles, what they'll do in certain areas of town. I can be open to for that expansion. Live feed too, I can see that on drone footage too, you know, with the situation that's deemed hostile. We want to check out the situation. For your guys' sake, you know, before we, before we fully move the end of success, it gives an advantage over, over the bad guys. So that's important. So I'm hearing that, I'm in, I'm in favor of moving forward with, with, with Axon.
Yeah, and just, just so you know, I mean, the LPR wouldn't be on this current one that I have on here. The LPR system and the live feed does cost a little bit more. But I think it's something that
It gives us.
A year or two down the road, we have an option to, if I can get a grant, that would help pay for that. I can get a grant that would help. Also with Axon, uh, the city doesn't have to go by their the fifteen thousand or nineteen thousand each year for each system. They, that's the minimum payment. Now the city can decide if they want to pay the whole amount or if they want to pay a large amount in the name of school down. However, the city wants to do it, if but that's the minimum payments that will be on every year.
And saying that I myself in my own enforcement duties here with the city have benefited from the use of these cameras. I have invited an officer to come with me several times when I felt that I could possibly be threatened or there was some kind of litigious situation that I was getting into and wanted to record of. So it is available you know, for other departments in the city.
We do that with Bray quite a bit too. We go out with Bray on situations too quite a bit, just so there's video.
Sure.
It, the video saves, believe it or not, video saves the city tons of liability. We've had numerous complaints where people have called in and made false accusations against a police officer. And we're able to squash that very quick when we watch the video and then we let them know, are you sure you want to follow through with this? Because when we say that, we're saying if you follow through with it, you will be charged with filing a false report because we have evidence right there. And it, it, it saves a lot of, a lot of issues. But it also, you know, it keeps us in, in a positive, you know, it, it keeps us in line. I mean, but it, it's mainly a liability issue that it really protects the city, protects the officer. So.
Well, I, I'm ready to look at it from a vantage point. Of course, it protects us. It protects us as a city, protects your staff. So with that, but also it's, it's a means of transparency. If we have nothing to hide.
Keep challenge.
That what we're doing out there, we're enforcing the law. No, we're not trying to do anything else. So I admit it's important to convey.
Yeah, because in today's society, the court system, honestly, it's sad to say, I mean, I've been doing this for twenty-six years. And a police officer's voice and statement is no longer relied on by the court system. The only thing they rely on now is video, which I don't have an issue with, uh, even watching a video that I do because doing everything the way I'm supposed to. And that's the way all the officers feel about it. So I'll get and it actually makes cases easier for us to have it on video.
Yeah, well, that's, that's good. So it's unfortunate to hear that it's occurring in the judicial system, but it's, it's good to hear that you're open to that to protect you guys, protect us. This is what transfers are possible for. So I, I'm preparing everything, discussion, event, jump, SSAD with the system. I believe you should move forward with, with Axon. And prove it possible tonight.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Can I call you to that on that now?
Yeah, so, uh, we did a public safety committee meeting to talk about, um, the purchase of these cameras and the timeliness of it. And we did talk about several options, um, the donation funds, there's not enough in there available to cover it. Plus, um, most of those were donated by residents for specific projects, um, the K nine and squad and, and other programs such as that. Um, we talked about forfeiture funds and, um, that is something that could be used on, on these systems. But there's not currently an amount available. There's, there's possibly some coming, but we don't know. There's no confirmation on that right now. There's nothing available to use. So, um, we can look at different options of inner fund transfers, but really what we're looking at is just taking from one account to another, um, police and our public works, streets and parks are departments that are funded one hundred percent by general fund. They don't, they don't have that revenue. They aren't enterprise funds. They rely on monies that we bring in through property tests and all of that. So we do have the ARPA funds sitting there right now. I know there's been a lot of discussion on using those for a big project, um. And I think with, with the situation that the, the police department is in right now and needing that equipment. And we've got some pretty good offers here too, to really, uh, get some really good equipment that is going to be reliable. Um, and really the ARPA funds originally were, were presented to, for essential workers and, uh, law enforcement, public safety, people out there working in many, many communities used to them for things like premium pay and incentives and, and that for law enforcement and um, they're, it's a, it's a department that's struggling right now with retention and recruitment and all of that, um, let alone getting equipment to keep them protected and the communities protected. So if we look at using ARPA funds to be a fairly easy solution to this timely problem that that the department is, um, faced with, it still leaves, um, eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars to put towards a large project of, for infrastructure for um, streets or parks or uh, you know, really whatever, whatever we need development of any kind of the, are looking at to put that, that large amount of funds. So there's still a significant amount of money left, but we also, especially going with Axon, um, they've, they've got tasers in there. That's another thing that we're looking at in the coming years for police to get updated equipment. And they're going to replace the cameras on years three, five and, and seven. I mean, that that's a huge benefit to us. Likely these are going to become required through legislation before too long. It's already happened around us. It's probably going to um, be facing us soon here as well. So it's a process. There's no escape to it. We don't want to have that, that equipment to, that is the best for our, our department. So um, I think the, the ARPA funds make the most sense because they're there and available and we're on a limited um, timeframe to be able to come up with a solution. Um, and it does, it still leaves a lot of money left to do uh, a large project and there was something towards it.
I like, I, I think that we should use the ARPA money for it. For the simple reason that these need to be done and they need to be done fast. And we have that money and we should use it for something that has to be done. Uh, it would be like, uh, major piece of equipment or something at the water plant that needed to be replaced. Uh, that's what that money's for. And this, this has got to be done probably by July. Uh, because the other ones are going to be outdated and who knows how long they'll work. Uh, who knows July, first they might just quit work and then we're without none. And that, that leaves us a big liability. So I'm all for using ARPA money.
Bye, love.
I'm going to agree. It's, you know, that's, you know, the, these ARPA funds, that's one of the things that they were looking at was, was all of course, that's, you know, for, for municipalities. I believe this is good. Again, it's protecting us, it's showing transparency, most important too, and I'm really not mentioning is that cloud evidence management, you know. I just like to know, not to go in too much time. What do we have now to back that up? To ensure that we're not losing anything? Why are we pursuing this with the ARPA funds? Cause, cause that's, that's important. We don't want to lose any of that for any, anything ongoing or past in case something does occur.
We can't afford to lose anything that we have. And right now I believe IT has got a backup system for everything that we have downward. But what the problem is, is if our system happens to go down after July first, Motorola is not going to do anything to fix it. They want us to at least spend several thousand dollars for a Band-Aid in order to make our system work. So therefore, anything we record without that system, we can't download it. So if we were to be in a position where we have no place to put the video.
Anywhere.
Anywhere. And then it kind of puts us in a bad spot. So my belief is I really don't want it to work out. I mean, it's already put us in a position where I have to come ask for a large amount of money and I really don't want to do a Band-Aid for six, seven thousand dollars. If, if we don't have to. And I know as soon as I can actually call Axon, Kel-Tec, Motorola and say, okay, let's place this order, then that's the quickest, the quicker way I can get everything to ball go on and get things going. And like Axon says, if we go through them, they will put a rush where we can actually not wait until January. They would try to have everything done by September, October timeframe, which I'm hopeful that our system would stay up and running. But, you know, it's got to put my faith and guy upstairs and then it keeps running properly. We can get replacement fixed. But, you know, unfortunately this put me in a bad spot, uh, with the news from Motorola and uh, kind of has us in a panic spot.
Well, this is like the best option. I haven't heard anything else. You know, we don't forge our funds. We don't know what's there. We do have the ARPA funding. Plenty left over for possible street resurfacing and, and or repairs. So I'm in favor of utilizing ARPA, you know. Do you have a quick question for your employees?
Yes.
So there's two, there's two different prices on Axon, I might argue against each other, but you got one sixty-two, thirty, one thirty for the five-year contract, but when you add all those numbers up over this five years for the in-car and on body cam, it's one seventy-seven, five eighty-nine, ninety-five, which is fifteen thousand, three hundred fifty, fifty-six cents difference. So which number are you dealing with?
I'm dealing with the number that he gave me for the payments. So that's what's on there. So.
The, the, the one sixty-two plus is not correct, is it, Remo?
I actually, uh, what he has on here, if there's, uh, total savings on the in-car, which he don't have that form, everybody else has that. We have our total savings. So for the body worn and taser, we have total savings of ten thousand, three ninety-four off that price. And then total savings off the in-card is six thousand, three eighty-four. Well, does that give you the number?
Then you split it out about sixteen, sixteen grand right there. And it's pretty close to fifteen, three fifty-eight.
Okay, they, you don't think charges more if we pay it by the, uh, by the year? If we pay it all at once, is that one sixty-two, two thirty, one thirty?
Oh, that's cool.
Cause that would be the savings.
I can actually probably call them off, find out.
You could just try to figure out what the, what the number is you're actually thinking about.
All the.
Well, the factors and the savings that's on the other sheet, I come up with a total price of one hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six.
That's what I got too.
Cause the TASER, you have to save two thousand. Total, or ten thousand, three nine, ninety-four. Six thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars.
Mr. Collins, what do you think about the using ARPA funds for this while we're clarification of the number?
Um, I, I confer with the other two councilmen that we need to not only protect our city, but we need to protect our officers too. Um, so getting the cameras right away, I guess, is something that I feel that the city needs to do. And, um, I don't know, we have a lot of ideas of where we want that ARPA money to go, but this is something that can't wait. So I, I guess I'd be in favor of doing the ARPA funds.
Time saving standpoint, do you give you the flexibility to rip that, that range of one hundred sixty thousand to two hundred sixty-two thousand?
To exceed?
Yeah, not to exceed the one two thentys or.
They're waiting to pull a model as, but it's not on the spot. If I was to look and look at you, that particular discount, what's been done, what's been said. Let's see, it was already, it'd be even better. So, but that's, but that, that may not be enough to go. Going that going through, making them call, burning, eating this. This is do that not to exceed the, uh, one sixty-two, two thirty-one, thirty cents. And if that's the case, then I like to make a motion for Do I use an ARPA funding?
I'll second that.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Chief. To approve ARPA funding, not to exceed one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cent, thirty cents to Axon. Call.
Chief. Chief.
Hi.
Blackwell. Peters, Abs, Collins, and we got three of them.
Please do, Arthur. This is bringing that pure attention.
I apologize for.
All right, and I'll call on you in publicly.
I guess so. Um, I'm not going to listen to a bunch of projects that we've been doing. Um, but as you guys know, Tony, we went back to super. Uh, offered to help, have him help and his other two guys, you know, start kind of buying efforts and getting stuff done as a one big uh, piece of group. So that's been going really good. And Tony and Greg and Kevin have been great helping out and really, I guess, I just want to tell you what's allowed us to do is finally we've been just done tons of maintenance in the parks that have been ignored. Um, we can still do big projects like T wall fields, why other stuff doesn't get neglected. So it's working out well. Um, I think Tony and Nevada, we talked. We still may need to add another employee next year. You know, we just need to see how this goes. But so I just want to thank those guys. And actually Jake and the utility guys have done a ton in our parks to help. We've had to hang all new nets like at the fourplex. It's just time consuming stuff that uses tall equipment, but everybody's working together good. Um, I think just as much as everybody else and wanting to get the intersection open and get that over with. So what Greg and I have planned or we're trying to get planned is uh, basically a big passion project that we can bring to Nevada first and then like you guys. And basically fix a lot of things that have been damaged on D two routes, um, and major streets like East La Clair Road that just getting a patch hopefully this summer before winter. So um, that's kind of what we're doing. Just, you know, everybody knows that there's a lot of odd little patches I've been hearing Collins about. So we we haven't ignored it. It's on our radar and hopefully I don't know, Greg, maybe by the next council, maybe we can have that or maybe uh, probably first, we need to discuss it for anything here, for any of the councils. So you guys have any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Hey, maybe a freshman suggestion, maybe something brought up, he was talking about the intersection. Currently there at Iowa in First Street, that is a four-way stop right there clearly. Um, there's been a lot of talk about possibly keeping it that way to protect the kids crossing there. It appears to be working well. We're all accustomed to it. Maybe this is something that we need to discuss later before the project's over and get everybody's input on it. But what's the likelihood of us keeping that a four-way stop? If not permanent, if not permanent, then at least during school where they can write out a temporary assignment on First Street to stop traffic for the safety of the kids going across. Second to that, we have the crossway by the administration building that's going across Iowa Street. It's it's, to me, it seems like it's a little too far west. When you have kids crossing there and individuals are turning east to go up Iowa Street, it gets it gets jammed up there and people turning. Iowa, I've seen somebody get rear-ended because somebody stopped at kids and they're either looking or not paying attention, who knows? But when you're coming around and you're turning, it gets congested. Maybe you should look at where the school just speak about moving that crosswalk in further eastward to get it away from the corner. So we're not counting on that traffic on that intersection, just just due to the safety, the safety concern. So the whole people stops with that, but especially I guess right now, we we can talk about the four-way stop. Is that going to remain permanent? Is that going to go? Is any possibility to keep it permanent or at least during school bounds?
And when we had a meeting with the school board, they were hoping we could do this also. So the school is totally in favor.
Keeping it permanent, Councilman Collins?
Yes.
There's something, there's something that we discuss. Or is that, is that suffering a genuine argument, I guess?
I think we should discuss it at another date and get some more statistics. Because right now that works. Because it's just limited flow of traffic from the parking lot from this north and south exits. You're not taking into consideration the flow of that new intersection. I think it.
Once it's opened up.
It might create a terrible bottleneck at the intersection when those cars start backing up.
Mm hmm.
So I think until there can be some information applied, like with the traffic study of what that was before that intersection was enlarged. And I think that's a good topic to talk about. Maybe Greg can get some information on what what that intersection flowed before. How many cars were on that road? But I I really see, I know the school would like us to keep that. And maybe it's something we should consider for during during school hours. But I can really see that creating, we did this intersection to flow more traffic and make it better convenience for people and trucks to make the corners and whatnot. But that's not, how many yards is that from that intersection, that four-way start? Maybe hundred fifty, two hundred yards?
Good night.
So that might, might hold eight or ten vehicles. And that's not semis or school buses. So if that traffic lights green and all of a sudden the cars back up. So that's why I think it's a good idea, but we should consider all the other variables there that we don't know about before we approve something like that.
Well, with those regular uh, survey meetings, we give us great opportunity to look at it. And maybe it's something that's not permanent right away due to opinion, traffic study. Or we can even do something with the temporary signs that we see on Fifth Street.
We wouldn't want to do something detrimental to all this work we've been waiting for to flow more traffic to to wad it up.
No, no, dude. But it'd be nice to be cognizant of that traffic when those kids crossing there.
Absolutely.
Or putting them across the way and make sure it's it's lit properly like it is. But with that being said too, if we can put on that agenda item, if that is going to remain a four-way stop or even temporary, moving that crosswalk in more eastward on Iowa to get it away from the corner or so we don't have that bottleneck there too.
Greg, could you get some information on some of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tony, calling you.
Sure. We've got some projects that we sort of planned today. Sure, if you guys do email or talk to you uh, in person about, we've got a VFT controller that we need to replace. Um, one of them that's starting to fail was from the two thousand expansion and one was from two thousand eight expansion. Um, so we'll be getting a spare one of those so that if they do, one of them does fail, we're able to replace that. We have three valves from a nineteen ninety-four basin uh, that have failed. That will be replacing. Um, I got a rate mechanical uh, sent a quote to to do that work. So unless you have any objections, uh, we're moving forward with that as soon as we can. With the drought, we've been able to take the basin out of service as our flow is down, which is good. So it has caused some issues here. On the heavy rain, we're going to hold that basin in service. Um, and then a lot of things are, our generator uh, needs replaced. Um, battery is currently working on getting the size of generator that we needed for current uh, use as well as possible future expansion. Um, that is a budgeted item for fiscal year twenty-four. However, it is likely to take a little bit of time to get a generator of that size. We're looking at getting the size and getting quotes and bringing it back to you guys for consideration, hopefully sooner than later. And like Brian said, I have this um, there's a description, we're getting a lot of stuff done. Groups are working really well together. A lot of stuff's getting accomplished. Any questions on the West Water side I can answer.
Thanks, Tony, for giving diligence there. Sounds like we're getting some um, given the fact you wore multiple hats there for a while, getting some necessary maintenance caught up to speed. Joe, can I call on you?
Yeah, uh, just letting you know, he's looking on things. I have an answer tomorrow for everybody. We're at least letting that in on. So uh, reference uh, anything else, uh, right now I gave council members in the mayor, um, an invoice from Carl Sherrill A. Uh, right now, um, Chevy Tahoe for the, that's been earmarked for the police department is in uh, part of our nations that we've been collecting and has been for a new squad car as well. Uh, and we had more than enough in there to cover the forty thousand, seven fifty-seven. So I'm going to be looking at uh, the next council meeting to see if uh, we can move forward with uh, police department using its O O eight, uh, the community police funds uh, that we have to make this purchase. Because right now, also Officer Behrens will be completing his final night tonight. So after that, we will be done over to the police department. As he's resigned and law enforcement was not for him, so he's moving on. So we're currently taking applications and waiting to see what we get. Right now, nationwide process for getting applicants has been pretty tough. So and it's been pretty tough for us right now too. So hope to be abreast on what we end up with on that part. And everybody else is doing pretty good and just charging forward.
And when does the Officer Casa and the dog actually start to look there?
Right, July thirty-first, uh, they start their turn in down the Cedar Creek channels in Mama, Illinois.
Thank you, Joe. Nevada, calling you.
So another update from Wildwood Construction, they are uh, confirmed to start work this Saturday on the Secure Interest Project for City Hall. They came in and uh, took a look last week. We had some plans. We've got them all set to come in and start doing that on Saturday. Um, sounded like it was going to take them about a week to finish it up. Um, there was a scam incident at the community center uh, with an email that went out and uh, who someone asked for some payments on using a Zelle account. And I just wanted to uh, make mention of that, that Jeff and Chief were really quick to respond to that and to effectively manage that and get some communication out so that people that received that email uh, were aware of the scam before they got it. So we didn't have anybody, uh, I think we had one incident where someone paid into it and it's now working to to uh, fix that that broad incident. So good job with that and responding to that really quickly. Other than that.
Does it need to be special with all the communities are doing, running fireworks and with the being dry, potential grass and structure fires? Have you heard anything with that, Nevada?
I haven't had anything, any calls or anything coming um, that I'm aware of. I don't know if they're coming in to police.
Thank you for what's being done or.
We're currently.
Been here until birthday.
We are in a very.
Good day. Because I mean, we're, I mean, we're, we're meeting again on the on the third, correct?
Yes.
So good day. So I don't know if we need, if we need to look to see what else Scott County is doing regarding that potential sparks or what public safety is saying, follow potential leads at this particular time or things need to be postponed. And so you know, we get more rain, it's something to consider regarding public safety.
That's, and I think that's something that should need to go with fire department on to get your take on it because fireworks technically aren't run a burn.
Yeah, so I don't know if the burn ban would affect fireworks being let off on the third and the fourth this year. Except this is the first year we've actually been in a burn ban, with my knowledge, trying to sort the line if it continues.
It's something to consider of everybody, of everybody.
And I haven't seen any fireworks calls come in yet. So I think it's just been good as of far. So.
I think people were fairly cognizant of the dry matter, what could potentially occur from that.
It's not going to take much right now.
No, no, and it is scary. So yes. So let's be cautious about everybody.
I checked with everybody else is doing it. If they're doing like a social media campaign or something, or if it calls for a special meeting just to have the topic out there, um, we'll see what other meetings are doing.
Great.
But that could be, that could be something in that park when you're Scott, that's what you're still handling. Maybe you really make a little bit of dryness and dangers of it. It'll probably be helpful. Especially for the fire department. Might be pretty busy.
Well, yeah. You know, no, no. I was scared a couple of years ago on Burger. You need some to first. You know, when like back within city limits, you know, we'll be right there.
We don't need that.
That being said, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So move clear.
Exactly.
She might black well, it's like my Collins, although you're favored, say hi. Here's your.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you didn't see a break.